This evening with our invocation from Teresa Leeming. You certainly have the drill down, so please just proceed when you're ready.
Heavenly Father, I ask you to bless our commissioners with favor, grace, wisdom, and insight. Lead and guide them in the way they should go to make Clay County, Missouri, a great place to live, learn, work, and play. Strengthen them as they lead with vision and virtue. I thank you for all your provisions. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized.
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda are public comments. Any citizen who wishes to make a comment, addressing it to the commission is certainly welcome to come forward. If you do so, please make sure that you press the button, the green light is on on the microphone, that you speak clearly, you state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment at this time? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Commission meeting minutes from February 6th, February 13th, and February 20th. Resolution 2025-56 approving invoice payments for Clay County from February 15th through February 21st. There are 168 invoices totaling $685,613.34. And resolution 2025-66 approving a term and supply agreement for copier-printer lease services for the assessor's office between Rico Business Solutions and Clay County.
Is there a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2025-58. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-58 is a request for a waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error by Troy and Mary Beth Boone. And I believe Mr. Boone is here in the audience to present information to the commission.
If the applicant would like to come forward, thank you. Make sure the green light is on on the microphone. Identify yourself and then please proceed.
My name is Troy Boone.
Go ahead and just kind of give us a, give us your version of what you'd like to say.
Yes, sir. Again, I appreciate your time. I'm going to read what I submitted just to keep the emotion out of this. Again, I, the taxpayer, is stating that I believe that I had paid the property tax before the deadline. I've presented the commission with proof of that. However, as I attempted to verify that with the county assessor's office after the 31st of the year, I received a verification of payment. That was an online payment. I was in attempt to kind of stay up with the ages and use the advanced technology that the county offered as far as paying online instead of sending it into the mail, as I had done prior to that. I also confirmed that I had sufficient funds in the account to pay the taxes. I've also provided the commission with a bank statement showing those funds. Again, I had not been late or delinquent on any taxes requested by the county for over 25 years. I had provided reason for the, or the institution had declined the funds because it was by a debit card. And so there was a limitation on my card for daily purchases that I was not aware of. I understand that might sound naive, but I've never, never had any problem like that before. The reason that this came up was that I used the same debit card, the same process, online payment for my property tax for my automobiles, and that went through fine. Of course, that was a less amount. Again, I provided, or the institution provided reason for the decline. I spoke with Barbara at the commission's, and she was the one that finally told me that, that I guess it had been declined. And so then I followed up with the institution, financial institution, and questioned on why it was, and that's when they told me that there was a limit on that. I said, was there any notification of that to me? And they said, well, unfortunately, you should have known that. I get that too. So that's my responsibility. However, I hadn't had that problem before. I guess everything over a certain amount, they set a limitation on. And until you have an uncomfortable situation like this, you're not made aware of that, or at least I wasn't. And so now there is not a limit on that card. And I know, I guess from this experience, that I should use a bank account and a routing number instead of a debit card. So again, the card was declined because it exceeded the debt card daily purchase amount. I was then, again, went to the bank and asked for a statement from them showing that the card did process on before the due date, and have them give me written statement from the bank, and I provided that to the commission as well. Again, I'm just asking for leniency for the reasons stated. Was not aware that there was such a limit on the debit card. I was also asking for understanding of the situation since my attempt was sought out and I was trying to stay up with the times as far as using the technology and being more efficient, not getting cluttered up with the mail or anything like that, trying to get the county paid more efficiently or quicker. At this time, again, as I submitted, I'm asking for the refund of the interest and the penalty. I don't know if you need those amounts stated.
You can state, do you mean the amount of the refund that you're seeking?
Yeah, so.
Certainly, you can, it's on our paperwork, but if you'd like, you can certainly recite it.
Okay. So again, the interest amount was $93.67, and the penalty amount was $570.44. And so, again, I appreciate your time tonight, hearing me out, and I guess that's it.
Thank you very much. And there may well be questions, so if you could kind of hang in there a bit.
Sure.
We appreciate it.
Yep.
Commissioner Withington, you were seeking recognition?
Yeah, hey, thanks for coming. It sucks when that happens. It's happened to me too, and it's embarrassing when it happens, you know?
Pretty embarrassing.
Yeah. So I want to make a motion that we approve this ordinance 2025-58. To me, it looks like he did try to, in good faith, make his attempt to pay this before the deadline. The bank just cut you off because you spent too much money. So I want to make a motion that we approve this.
Motion's been made for the approval of 20, excuse me, 2025-58 with the box marked "approved." Do you have any other, oh, okay. Well, can I say any more comments? I take it no at the moment. Commissioner Lawson, you are seeking recognition.
Yeah, no, I feel the same way as Withington does. You know, he paid it, he thought it was paid, he got the receipt it was paid, everything looked proper. We had the same thing happen just on vacation. I bought something that was too much money, and my card got declined, and I thought, I got more than enough money in there.
Yes, ma'am.
And called the bank and raised holy hell, and they took care of it right away. But it is an embarrassment. In this instance, you're hit with $570 worth of interest that should have never happened to you, so, a penalty rather. So I agree with Commissioner Withington. I think in this instance, it's not like he paid it late or something of that nature. He physically paid it in good faith, everything was done properly, just a glitch. So I think we should do as Commissioner Withington said.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. So the question I'm going to ask our county councillor has nothing to do with whether or not you have done anything wrong. And I am very attuned to the fact that you paid in good faith. We have in our receipts, as you probably observed, and it's on the copy that's here, that it's got a clear, and if it doesn't clear, then the receipt's no good. And generally speaking, to provide relief, we have to be able to show that it was something that we have done, which I think you would agree, it's the bank that is at issue here. So my question for the county councillor is, if his bank messes up, and clearly it did, is there relief that we are able to provide? What does the state law says when it comes to the bank?
The state's law says that the county commission may grant relief if there is evidence of a county error or omission.
Okay.
Full stop.
Yeah, I figured you'd do that full stop business. So, I guess I'm going to just tell you, I feel for you. I think this stinks. I think the bank owes you a lot of money, and they should pay you that money because it is their fault. But I have a feeling that they're basically saying, well, Noah was in the, whatever.
That's kind of where I started.
Yeah, yeah. I am compelled, because of what has been said by the county councillor, that I will unfortunately not be able to vote with my colleagues. There's good reason too, but it is what it is. And so, but I just wanted to double check, because I'm always willing to find a little way to get through that, but I'm a little more, I'm going to be a little more of a stickler on that because of the source of the error. But I feel for you. I think that stinks, and if I could write something to your bank, in fact, maybe I will, if you tell me who it is, because that's not right. But anyway, that's where I'm at, and I appreciate you being here tonight and bringing your case forward to us.
Thank you. Before I go to Commissioner Lawson, I had a question. I'm looking at the statement, and it was declined due to exceeding debit card daily purchase limits. So that feels a little bit like, it wasn't an error of the bank, it was bank policy that you got crossways with. So I'm not sure the bank actually made an error. But I mean, let's face it, when you open a banking account, you get a truckload of paperwork that is usually in microtype of one sort or another. But it looks to me like that, that's kind of where the disconnect happened, was that there was a, you know, an unintentional exceeding of the daily purchase limit on your debit card. It looks like that to me, and that reflecting on your comments. So with that, Commissioner Lawson, you were seeking recognition?
So I got to look at our councillor here. Under these circumstances, is there no way around that because he did pay properly? We accepted it, everything was good. It wasn't like he gave us a bad check, you know? I realize it isn't our fault technically, but I, you know, I feel like there ought to be some kind of leniency here because of the circumstances. Can you, in your wisdom, come up with anything at all?
Again, the statute has one singular exception or authorization for relieving the taxpayer of the debt, and that is when the county makes an error or omission.
Yeah, but we found out from Commissioner Johnson, when we thought that before, that if there were error with the postal service, wasn't that it? If there was a postal service error, that we could go ahead and it was able to give that.
We had approved those a couple times, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, maybe there's, I don't know.
Yeah, good, thank you. Commissioner Lawson, you can stay. If you, okay, if you guys wanted to have a discussion back and forth, I was going to keep you both on. Commissioner Johnson?
So a couple things going on here, Mr. Boone. In case you're not aware, and we talk about this almost every week when these come up, is technically, or legally, I should say, and that's what our attorney over there. Legally, the state says, you know what, county commission, you're only allowed, you're only allowed to give these people their money back if it's your fault. In other words, if it's our fault that your, whatever happened, wasn't paid on time, whatever, if it's the county's fault, well, then we have the authority to give that back to you. Obviously, this wasn't the county's fault. You're not making any claims that this was the county's fault. It's clear it's not the county's fault. Having said that, I'm not a big fan of the law. I actually question the legality of the law. I question the legality of being able to appeal something to a board that can't do anything. In other words, it's like being charged for crime and going to an appellate court, and the appellate court says, yeah, you're not guilty, but we can't do anything about it. That's not how appellate courts work. That's not what appeals are about. So I don't like the way the law's written. I think there's flaws in the law. I don't think the law covers everything. I very much, I mean, to me, I think the whole idea is behind the spirit of it and the spirit of your intent. I mean, you tried to pay your bill on time, you thought you paid your bill on time, you did everything that you thought was right, and now you're going to get penalized $664 for it. I don't like that. I don't think that that's fair. I don't think that that's good. I don't think that's good business for us. I don't think that's good business for government. I don't like it. The problem is, is, you know how much I don't like it? The laws, right now, the law says, I don't care how much you don't like it, Jay, that's what the law is. And so we have a couple options here. Either we can clearly say, you know what, we're going to give him his money back, knowing that it's not, I think it's pretty clear in the law that it's not our fault and we technically can't give it back. But at some point, someone's got to challenge this. Someone's got to challenge this law, and whether this is the route we go to do that or not, I'm sure our lawyer's not going to be happy with that. But that's what frustrates me, is something has to challenge this law, because this law is poorly written, I think, on a number of fronts. And the postal office was a perfect example, and the example that Commissioner Lawson was giving was someone put their stuff in the mailbox on time, but the post office didn't pick it up and postmark it on time, when they should have. So if it's not postmarked on time, well, then it's considered late. Well, they put it in the post box on time, and it should have been marked. And so we've relieved that. We've also had situations where we relieved, similar to these situations, I believe, in the past. And one of the issues that I think the commission needs to look at is, we need consistency. We need to figure out what we're going to do and be consistent about it. You know, he's not the first person who paid it and then found out later that his bank rejected it for some reason. He got the, we've had several people come before us, yeah, the bank said it was paid, then later said, no, it wasn't paid. It didn't go through all the way. Several people have come to us with that, and they thought they paid it, similar situation to yours. And we need to be consistent with those, I think. And I'm fine with being consistent with giving their money back. I mean, I'm a softie on this stuff. I think the intention was there, I think that's good business. If we're in the private sector, it'd be, yeah, no problem. You know, you're a good customer, you're a good paying customer, you pay every year, you pay on time every year. We don't want to lose a customer like you. And in the private sector, we'd be bending over backwards to work that out. Government just doesn't run the same way, unfortunately, and I wish it did, and I wish there's a way we can change it. And so I guess really the question for the commission is, and I think it's clear, that the law is saying that, no, we can't give it back because it's not our fault. The question's got to be, do we want to challenge that? Do we want to say, no, we're going to give it back anyway? And are we going to be consistent with that? And are we eventually going to want to deal with consequences of that if there's a challenge that comes down the road? In other words, hey, you guys aren't following state law, do you guys want to challenge this in court? I don't know. I don't know the answer. I mean, I know my personal opinion, but I don't know the answer of the whole commission on that. Maybe some others want to weigh in, I don't know. But I know Commissioner Withington wants to talk.
I was going to also put something in there, because I'm going to follow up on your point, and that is, I think you put your finger on it, and that is the consistency of this body in what we are going to do. I don't want to be overly dramatic, but are we engaging in nullification of state law? If we are, then we better be very consistent. So if we are going to engage in nullifying state statute, consistency is going to be key to that, and we have been a bit all over the lot on this thing. I think that's something that should be considered.
If I could just respond to that real quick.
Sure.
One of my problems with this law is that it's silent on so many things. It's just not clear on a number of things. Like this. I mean, you could say it's clear, yeah, it's not our fault. It's like, you know, but there's got to be something in the law, there's got to be a better written law that says, okay, these are the situations where, okay, the county can give it back, because essentially, the state's not really losing money here, to any degree anyway. I mean, they're still getting the, it's whether or not they're going to get part, their portion of the penalties and the interest, which they set, by the way, which I think is ridiculous, paying $664.
10%.
Penalty on this and interest because you didn't know, you thought it went through and you didn't know until later you were notified. That's just, I think that's horrible. I think it's bad business. I think it's bad governance. But anyways, I just, I'm not a big fan of the law, the way it's written, and I just don't know the best way to handle that, but that's where I'm at.
But I would also kind of compare this to, and it's also, you know, the infraction is not, we're not talking about high crimes here.
Right.
The idea that someone may well get a speeding ticket, the speeding limit is clearly delineated, and if you are exceeding it, you're exceeding it, it's rather black and white. However, I think we all realize that there is a degree of discretion that is left to the officer who is writing the citation. If, you know, they may well, depending, they have some degree of discretion. I guess the question would be, do we exercise that same degree of discretion? And quite honestly, I've never been in law enforcement, so I don't know beyond the superficial what that discretion looks like on the part of, say, an officer. You obviously would, so I'm kind of. You, you obviously would, so I'm kind of thinking in terms of that kind of comparison. Is that a valid comparison?
And that's a good analogy because it brings up a very good point in my mind. First, there's, there's discretion on officers' part for writing in the fraction, but also, let's say an officer writes a, a ticket, there's an appeal process. First, they can go to court and if they don't like what the court decides, they can appeal that to higher court. And the court can completely overrule that and completely throw it out, which happens on a regular basis. That doesn't happen here. That, we don't have that option here. And there's no appeal process for that. It's for, there's no appeal process for, hey, I tried to pay. There's no appeal process for exactly this. The only appeal process we have in place is if it's the county's fault and we can overturn it. And that's not really an appeals process. It, it ties our hands. And in appeals process, the appellate court or whoever's in charge, they have the, ultimately the decision-making at hand. We, we really don't have the ability to make the decisions that we want to make. I mean, half these I would have, I would have given back their money just because I think they're good people, they're trying to do the right things, it was honest mistake, we're not out any money, they paid it anyway, they just paid it, you know, a few days later, whatever. But, but yeah, so that's my problem is this, this isn't really a good appeal process because our hands are tied by the state. I think most people would probably say, yeah, let's give him his money back. He's, he's doing the right thing. But the state says, no, you can't do that. And so it becomes a process over mission issue here and we get stuck in, well, you know, the, the, the big rules of government have decided this and, you know, we know how those operate. And it's just, it's just inefficient. I think it's just a very inefficient way to govern. And I'm all about fixing those inefficiencies. I just, this is a state level issue and I have no desire to run for state level office. So I don't know how, how to fix this, but that's my problem with it.
Did, would you, does that conclude your remarks for the moment? Obviously, we can recognize you. Again, Commissioner Withington, thank you for your patience. You are recognized.
Yeah, hey, so I just wanted to say, I think we have been pretty consistent with, on this, you know, we, we gave back last year, I made the motion two or three times about the post office. That was clearly a postal issue, not our issue. The people in good faith tried to pay on time. The, the only time we've had bank issues that I can think of was the screw up on the county's bank. It was UMB Bank, which is related to Commerce Bank, you know. There, but you remember they took the money out of the guy's account? Then they realized there was a mistake or something and then they debited it back to, or credited back to the guy's account. We gave that mon, we, you know, waived that guy's penalty and fees there. But that's the only time I can think of that we've had a bank issue. But, you know, I stand by my motion. If somebody from the state wants to come throw me out of office because we're giving Mr. Boone back $600, they can come throw me out. I don't care. I think this, I'm like Jay, I think this is pretty stupid, that they can't appeal. I think you did your, did what you were supposed to do. You have paid on time for 20 something years. That's not your fault. This, this is the bank's fault. It's not the county's fault either, but you did what you were supposed to do. You were a good citizen. And I'm going to stand by my motion and I'm going to vote to give you your money back.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm going to go the other direction and I apologize for that. Certainly respect the motion, respect the position of the three of you, and absolutely if state law gave me the discretion to, you know, to use the analogy of whether or not to write the ticket, I would certainly utilize that discretion to, to give, to not assign the penalty, excuse me, and interest. State law doesn't give us, in my view, that discretion. State law can always be changed. In this case, I think it probably ought to be changed and there are ways, of course, to do that. You know, as mentioned, that the board should have the final say. You know, in this case, I think the board ought to have the final say. In other words, us. I think we ought to be able to give the man his money back. But we don't under law. And, and even, you know, as mentioned, like if you took something to a court, to an appellate court, that you, that you may, you know, be able to have that judge render whatever verdict he or she wants. But, but really, the truth there is that that judge has to follow the law too. And so you take something to appellate court, the law says X, the judge has to enforce X. This is, I think Commissioner Nolte mentioned that this isn't, you know, we're not talking about war and peace here, that these, this isn't the most important adhering to law or not that, that one can imagine. But I do think the principle of adhering to the law is, is a good one to maintain. And laws and rules and ethical considerations, I think, ought to be followed. And I think this is an example of, we ought to reach out to folks in Jefferson City, get them to write one sentence into state statute, which would, as Commissioner Nolte served down there, it would be very easy to do. It would sail right through the process. I doubt, it would even hardly be noticed, such a change. And so I think that's the solution to the problem. Unfortunately, it doesn't help you today, but that's my understanding of what I think the law is and so that's how I'm going to.
Thank you. By the way, since you mentioned I was down there, in fact, while it was not my bill that passed that, to put this into effect, I had similar legislation. Prior to the legislation that was passed that put this into effect, it was, even if the county said, we messed up, it would still have been illegal under, under state law for us to, to refund the interest and penalty, even if the county admitted fault. So, and unfortunately, you, one would hope that it would slide through, but it was pitched, it was a kind of a pitched battle to get what we got out of that. It ended up going out, it ended up being a Senate bill coming back to us because the House bills pretty much all got killed off, if I remember correctly. So it was, while one would hope the common sense would prevail in any level of government, that's not always the case, as I think many of us are aware of. So I think we should be, I think it would be good to have this expanded, but I do believe that we need to stay within the parameters. And what concerns me most is we, as elected officials, are, are under oath to make sure that we are upholding the law and that we are doing our best to obey the Constitution and the statutory limits that we are put under. We can't, unfortunate, for better or worse, and I think it's probably for better, we can't really pick and choose which laws we decide we would care to obey and which ones we do not care to obey. Excuse me, John, Commissioner, I almost called you by your first name. I didn't want to do that. Commissioner Lawson, you were seeking recognition?
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you something I'm going to do tomorrow. We, we have heard people are going to do this and people are going to do that about this law. Nothing's getting done. I know you have friends in high places.
I've heard of Texas.
Okay. I'm going to make some calls in the morning and I'm going to ask several of our people down there that are always telling us how much the good they want to do for Clay County and, and make them get it in gear and do something about this. Just, county councillor, just for his protection, if, if Commissioner Withington votes to give it back and say everybody else says no, is he in any way in, in trouble? Will it come back and bite him?
Well, legally, no, I don't think so. I don't think.
Pardon?
I don't think so. I don't think the, the Attorney General's Office is going to come in and, and file a quote warrant or anything of that nature, if that's, if that's the question.
What happened if all of us voted to give it back?
Well, how a, the state or an entity would respond is, I mean, there are lots of different responses. One of the more obvious ones to me was if, if an entity who receives these dollars thought that the county commission did something that they shouldn't have done, and I'll just say a school district. If a school district said, you know, you shouldn't have done that and we think you went beyond the law, they could certainly file an action for that in court. I don't, I mean, you know, cool warranto action can be filed, you know, against a public official, but that's fairly, I mean, there's fairly broad discretion there, but that seems highly unlikely to me.
Well, we've seen commissioners get kicked out for less, if you want to go back and think about it.
Well, I, I probably know exactly who you're thinking of, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Councillor, just to kind of follow up on Commissioner Lawson's question, because we've had situations to where we were prescribed to take certain actions and it's not always been a unanimous vote. Any action that someone would care to take would not be against an individual elected official, but it would be against the body as a whole, which would require the body to take that action. Individual members can take what actions they please and I don't believe there would be a sanction just for that.
Yeah, correct. So, I mean, the, so the, just casting your vote is certainly not going to subject an individual to an action typically. I'll give you a couple of examples of what could. There are very specific prohibitions in the Constitution and statute against nepotism. So if one of you voted to hire your sibling, your spouse, you know, that could, you know, obviously be a problem. Similarly, there are very specific restrictions in statute about you personally benefiting from the county's dollars. So if one of you had a vending machine business and you, and the county commission voted to contract with that company and you voted in the affirmative, that would be an example where the individual might have, would be, certainly be subjected to some scrutiny and potentially could face some problems with the state.
But that would be, that would be an action that would, that would be touching on a different part of law.
Completely different part, that's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, it sounds like Commissioner Lawson's worried about going to jail over this. I think this would be a least of your worries, but running yourself in jail, but that's another story. There has been conversations, by the way, already about this with some folks up in Jefferson City and it haven't been well received. And maybe we just need to push a little harder, like you're saying, maybe we collectively push as some kind of, you know, resolution or something coming from the commission or something. But we need to do something and push this and maybe even look at some of our partner counties to push something because this has to change. The one particular issue with this one, Mr. Boone, is obviously not, not the county's fault, but, and I forget who brought it up, but it really wasn't a mistake either. It wasn't a mistake on the bank's fault. The bank is following, following the policy that apparently you just were unaware of. I think a lot of us are unaware of sometimes those limits that they put on us or, or whatever. So they're just, they were following their own rules, so they didn't do anything wrong either. So it wasn't mistaken. Really, the mistake was you just didn't realize that that was the limit that you had. And so that's what makes it difficult to basically override state law and say, yeah, it's, we can give you your money back. So I, I think I'm going to, I'm going to join my colleagues who are going to vote no on Commissioner Withington's appeal. Just, I want to, no, meaning that we would not give you your money back. I want to. I don't like this system, but I just feel our, our hands are tied on the, the way the system is. And I say this, I feel like I say this every week, but I just, we've got to change it. It hasn't changed yet, but it's not fair. It's not a fair system. It's not a fair penalty. It's, it's not a fair assessment. $664? It's just, that's just not, that's not fair. And we don't control that at all. We don't make that up. We can't change that. That's just out of our hands and that needs to change. And so I apologize that you had to come down here, but I'm, I'm guessing that it probably won't pass, but, but we'll see.
Commissioner Withington, are you, were, did you? What I'd like to say is, I don't know if, if, I have no one else on my board who cares to comment on this. What I would like to do, are you, are you planning to go ahead and renew your motion at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. Before you do that, I, I would like to do two things if, if I can have your indulgence. That is, to see if staff has anything that they want to add to it. If they don't, if they would just, I had not, I'll just take, okay. So I'm getting a head shake no on that. The other thing is, I would like the applicant to go ahead and make his, any, any final statement he would like before we go to a vote and then we'll go to you, Commissioner Withington.
Yes, sir.
Again, I appreciate the time of the commission. I appreciate your statement. You know, we don't always like those kind of statements and, and it was difficult for me to come, but I thought it was the right thing to do. I, I wanted to stick up for my family. 640 bucks in today's economy, a little rough to swallow, but I knew that I had to pay that in order to have my time here in front of you all. So, you know, I'm, I'm old school, so I would have mailed this and I hope I wouldn't have, would have faulted on the, on the mailing system. I was, I was trying to jump into the, to the technology that's made available to us every day now. And quite frankly, I use it every day. I feel like I'm competent. I feel like I'm good at it. I pay most of my bills on time. A lot of people tonight have said it's embarrassing. It's extremely embarrassing, especially standing up here in front of, in front of you and trying to, trying to win back 640 bucks, right? But it is what it is. We, we put you guys in place and respect the law. I just, if there's a bandwagon to jump on, Mr. Johnson, let me know about it because I, I do feel like there's, there's revisions to the, to the law and maybe this is the case to do it. I don't know what other proof I could have provided the commission showing that my best intentions were to pay on time. I think I brought up as far as the, the auto property tax, that one went through and that's what triggered this, you know? Why did I get a receipt for that and not this? And, and Barbara, part of your staff is amazing. She led me through. She actually kind of pushed me to have the courage to, to have my time tonight. So again, I appreciate the commission's time and I hope you have to vote in my favor.
Thank you very much for your, for your comments and for being here this evening. Commissioner Withington, I see no other commissioners wishing to speak, so you are recognized for closing remarks and to close on your motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. There you go.
Okay. Hey, you don't need to be embarrassed. I got your back, man. I don't know how it's going to go, but I'm going to stand by this motion to approve 2025-58 with the box marked approve. If the state comes to throw me out of office, you got to help me box up my office though, okay?
Thank you.
And you close?
I close.
Thank you. Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-58 with the box checked, approved. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
No.
Commissioner Wagner?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No.
Motion fails. One in favor, five opposed.
Thank you for being here, all the same, sir. We, we certainly appreciate and we have your point. Oh, did you have something you wanted to say? Just hold on for a moment. Commissioner Johnson would like to be recognized. Commissioner?
I could make a motion to approve 2025-58 with a box marked denied.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-54 with the box marked denied. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Unfortunately, yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
No.
Motion passes five, one.
Thank you for being here and giving us your information.
All right. Thank you all.
Next on our agenda, I, we have two that although you're not, they are not indicated on our, on our agenda. 2025-64 and 65 appear to be related and companion issues. Administrator, did you want to kind of treat them in that manner?
Yes, please. They are companion resolutions. Resolution 2025-64 is approve the Clay County Opioid Settlement Oversight Committee Charter and Resolution 2025-65 is approve the Clay County Opioid Settlement Fund Utilization Plan. So the commission may recall that two weeks ago, the opioid task force came before the commission, presented their recommendation for the utilization of the opioid settlement funding. In that discussion, we've taken their plan and their proposal along with the discussion from the commission. And some of the things that came up, you will see in the companion documents that are before you. One of the suggestions from the task force was to stay in place and to really have an oversight committee to basically take a look at those annual reports from those entities that would be receiving the funds and present a recommendation and a report to the commission. So with that, the two items that you have before you, the first resolution, 2025-64, is actually establishing the oversight committee. It is a charter that would establish this committee and basically it outlines the duties and responsibilities. Their responsibilities would be to review those annual reports coming in from the agencies that would receive the funding and submit an annual report to the commission. Not only how the funds were used and alignment with the plan, but also about the metrics and what we're seeing as an outcome from that funding that was utilized. We're also recommending that they actually perform a comprehensive reevaluation of the plan every five years. Because as you recall during the discussion two weeks ago, things changed. The, the, the outlook may change on what's going on in Clay County with the epidemic. Best practices change, new things come on the horizon. So the recommendation in their charter is that for every five years, they will do an in-depth reevaluation and as part of that annual process would also then present to the commission their recommendation for the next five years. It may be exactly what this plan says or it may change depending on what things look like. Also, we've charged them that should there be additional settlement funds that are presented to the county as part of the lawsuits, that they would also include recommendation on how to use those additional funds, either in the annual review or the reevaluation process, whichever is appropriate and the most timely. We're recommending that the task, the oversight committee be nine members, that those members from a representation of the community align with what was on the task force, bringing the expertise to the oversight committee. We're also recommending that the task force members be the initial members of the oversight committee and that they would serve three-year terms. The second item that is on your agenda for consideration is Resolution 2025-65, which is actually the plan, basically how to utilize the funding. And so it does incorporate the task force recommendation that they presented to you two weeks ago. It does outline the program over an eighteen-year period. It clarifies the allocation may change based on the reevaluation that is presented to the commission for every five years. It does establish and require that there would be service agreements that would be in place between the county and the receiving agency, outlining what the funds would be used for and what those metrics would be. It would also require the agency to turn in an annual report that the oversight committee would look at. The plan also incorporates what's in the charter for the oversight committee on what their overview and their review and their oversight responsibilities would be. In the plan is the financial information, a little hard to read on this particular slide, but again, as we've talked about, this is sort of a hard item to get our hands around because some of the agencies that have settled are paying different amounts through the eighteen years. Some have paid upfront, some are paying just a few years. And so what you have here is by agency, how much they, they are in the program and will be paying each year. It should be noted that currently for '22, '23, and '24, the county has received $712,201. Last two weeks ago when we presented, we had just been informed of a new settlement with McKenzie in which the county is receiving $77,391 in this year. We do not know yet what McKenzie's pay schedule looks like. So that is still an unknown for us, but as you can see here, what we know so far, over the life expectancy, the county will receive almost $2.7 million. Now, it is also earning interest, we're not reflecting the interest here, but the interest that is earned is, is also allocated to, to this particular fund. The plan also identifies and incorporates the recommendation from the task force. And so what you see here is the recommendation to the four different agencies and how much the annual allocation is. Then we show you the incoming, coming in and basically showing you the projected fund balance over the period of time, we have spent all the funds that have been allocated. And so you'll see that there are four agencies that are being recommended by the, the task force. Beacon for two programs, a peer support program that they talked to you about and then providing funding for transportation and transition housing. We have the Office of Dispute Resolution, has two programs, one for testing and one for youth programs. We have the Northland Coalition receiving funding. And then we have the Health Center putting in vending machine with additional Narcan supplies. So it's color-coded and in essence, this particular plan, as it is proposed, provides 63% of the funds in treatment and 37% of the funds in preventive. Now, again, the plan proposes that for the first five years, 2025 through 2029, would be identical to what you're seeing here. But as part of the process and the establishment of the oversight committee doing their five-year in-depth review in 2029, they would present to you their recommendation for 2030 through 2034. It may look like this with these agencies, but again, things may change and they may recommend that things that are different from that. And the plan certainly clarifies that this can change based on that reevaluation. So we've also included in the plan what that timeline looks like. So 2025 would be the implementation year. If the commission approves this this evening, then we would start working with those four agencies to create the service agreements and bring those back for commission to approve. Distribute the 2025 funds to those agencies in April would be our timeline. And then just kind of thinking the process in the fall, when we do the 2026 budget, we would incorporate in the '26 budget, the '26 allocation. And then basically fiscal years '26 through '29, every January, distribute those funds per the plan and in March, you would receive the report from the oversight committee on what happened the prior year. And in '29, '34, and '39, in addition, the oversight committee would present to you their recommendation of what to do over the next five years. And it may be this plan, but it might look a little differently. And with that, those are the documents that you have. We have members from the task force, which again, we would recommend would be on the oversight committee. Happy to answer any questions.
I just have one thing and I, this is really for the counselor. We took both of these issues together because they are related and I think it is more efficient to discuss them as a group. However, since one is, one question is to accept the findings of the opioid board that was, as it was constituted, the other is the creation of a board. My inclination is to make those two separate questions and two separate votes, although discussing them at the same time seems to be an efficient way to do it because they are related. Does that, does that seem the most consistent way to go forward?
Sure, I think it's fine to do it that way. It's one topic with two different resolutions or motions. I think that'd be fine to handle it that way.
Because it's conceivable that someone might agree with one part and not agree with the other part. That allows us to, I think, fully, fully air any, any concerns any commissioners have in the matter.
Yeah, I agree.
With that, Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you for the updates and again, thanks to folks who, you know, served on, on the, what did we call the group? The group?
The task force.
The task force, thank you, okay, thank you. So love the five years thing. You know, I think it's virtually guaranteed the conditions will change and that's of all types, like we talked about last week, the types of folks are targeting, types of treatments, types of substances. So I think that makes a lot of sense. You mentioned eighteen years a couple of times, so I know it goes through the year 2038, which for me is thirteen years, so I just wanna make sure that I understand that.
Well, because we've already had three years.
That we received the money.
Right, so I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no, it's okay, but the, but this is envisioned to be the actual spending years.
Right, so we're trying to tie the spending years with the last payment that we know that we have. And I do believe when the oversight committee comes in 2039, it will not only be this, but then we'll also have interest. So there will, it, the program may go beyond 2038, depending on interest earned and if there are any more settlements coming through. So this is, as we know today.
Yeah. And then on the McKenzie piece, you may have answered it, but I, I was thinking about a lot of things. So the $77,000 in the first year piece, are, are we indeed expecting more? And any sense at all of, of what that amount would be?
We, we do not know whether we do, we anticipate that we probably may be seeing a little bit more because if you look here, almost all of them have not paid just outright in one year. We've received over several years. So we don't know if they've decided to pay over a five-year period, a ten-year period, or taking all eighteen years from when they settled. We don't know yet. That's not, we've not been privileged to, it's not showing up on any of the data that we have.
Okay, and then so, once that data does come in and we have a better sense of it, how at that point do we determine how to allocate those funds?
So the way the charter is written and also the plan says that every year, when the oversight committee is looking at the results from the prior year, if at that time we know we're getting more money, they may also include in their recommendation as they give you the report, hey, there's additional funding. We would recommend maybe increasing in the following years. So it can always change every year. It almost, you know, it will have to be that way because we could get future settlements. We're just not aware of that maybe.
Right, yeah, well. And then, and then lastly, on the interest piece that you mentioned, so you know, as we discussed last week, I continue to think that, you know, front-loading the expenditure to the best we can. You know, I don't, because like I said, you know, I don't know what the world is gonna be like in 2030, much less in 2040. And so any kind of 2039 and beyond spending, given that we know we have a crisis now, I would rather. So in terms of that interest, is there a way to be using the interest as we go?
Absolutely, and so that could be incorporated in the annual recommendation from the oversight committee or certainly in the five-year plan, utilizing that in the next five years and increasing it so that those dollars are being utilized.
Perfect, well, that sounds great to me and thanks again for all the work that went into it. Thanks.
I assume that staff will be interacting with this board so that their recommendations are made in a time, a timely manner that we can then make sure that we are rolling it into a predictable schedule for each individual entity that's receiving so that there's a consistency in what they can be expecting.
That is correct. I believe in the charter that the staff liaison is the county administrator's office and also representative from the clerk's office. So there is staff support and staff involvement when the oversight committee would meet annually to assist them in, you know, gathering the, my, my, my anticipation is that the service agreements will require those entities to submit their reports to the county. The county will then pull those together and then have the oversight committee meet and go through that. So county staff will be involved in collaborating with the oversight committee.
And I see that there is a staggered term quality to this, which is good. It would be just, just for the sake of disclosing this, it would be my intention, unless someone does not care to continue serving, to nominate the members who are currently serving. I say that just to give some notice to my fellow commissioners. But with that in mind, you know, certainly get back to me, assuming that this is, this passes, I would encourage all commissioners to get back to me with any observations that they might have on this, but I would like to go ahead and at some point in the near future extend, because the, the applications filled out by the, the present occupants would be somewhat out of date, would not be our most current form of the application. So unless we hear otherwise, I would like to recommend that we extend an invitation that they fill out the new application so that we have those on file. Commissioner Johnson? Yes, I believe we can approve both of these together, 64 and 65?
We can do a motion to do both.
Yeah.
But you can also do a split as two.
Had, had suggested.
Well, that was just my recommendation. It does not, it does not a requirement. It was just a recommendation to do a, but you can do whichever you please.
That's all, I'll just, I'll do it separate. I move to approve 2025-64.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-64. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington? Motion passes six, zero.
Johnson?
Sorry, there you go. Move to approve 2025-65.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-65. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
I'm sorry, I probably should have called on members of the board to speak. I didn't mean to quite, quite jump in there, but if you would like to speak, I think we can extend, I would certainly be willing to extend that opportunity. But what I would like to say, and I think I speak on behalf of the commission at this point, is we appreciate, as we expressed in the last time we brought this before, our, but we express, we, we certainly appreciate the hard work and the dedication by the members of this board. So if you would like to address the commission, go ahead and make sure the light is on and identify yourself and you are welcome to proceed.
Yeah, Darryl Mikey, Director of Public Health, also the Chair of the Task Force. So thank you all for your time and your support. We took your suggestions into account after the, the last meeting, tried to front-load some of the items with some of that funding and I hope you saw that reflected in that plan. So thanks again for all your support.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, we will now move on to our next item. That would be 2025-57.
Resolution 2025-57 is approve invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from February 15th to February 21st. There are three invoices totaling $943.34.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-57.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-57. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next on our agenda is 2025-59. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-59 is approving continuing law enforcement education contract for the Clay County Sheriff's Office with the Missouri Sheriff's Association. Captain Agderian is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commission. Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This contract is, it's, it's kind of an odd one, honestly. There is a financial component that obligates the county, which is why I'm bringing this to you this evening. However, we've already paid the part that's attached to this contract. So what happens is the Missouri Sheriff's Association is one of about eighteen approved provider agencies in the state of Missouri to offer continuing education for law enforcement. And the unique thing about MSA is that it is unique to the needs of sheriff's offices in the state of Missouri. And so we want to be, as members of this agency or this organization, Clay County Sheriff's Office wants to make sure that we are publicly showing the other counties, we want to abide by this. We want to take part in this training and so we want to sign this, this agreement. That requires commission approval because there is a $5,000 price tag to this that comes out of the annual post-revenue that we get back from the state. So we are asking for your approval of this continuing education contract with Missouri Sheriff's Association.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the captain? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-59.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-59. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
That brings us to the final item under our regular agenda this evening, 2025-60. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-60 is approving the allocation of ARPA interest for the replacement and associated costs of the walk-in cooler freezer for the detention center kitchen with Odell services and Fox Box moves. And Captain Agderian is here to provide some information.
Captain? Oh, don't forget your mic.
You know what? That's the first time I think I've ever just forgotten that. Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. Before I, I describe this one in any additional detail to what I've already provided, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the county administrator, the auditor and facilities specifically for helping us work through this process because this one was kind of a doozy. It's gonna be a big project. This resolution is asking for commission approval of project funding to replace the walk-in cooler freezer unit in the detention kitchen. Late in 2024, we learned that there were some issues with this, with this appliance. It is the original one that was installed in 1985 when the jail was built. So it's had a good run. The problem is, the way it's built, there is, there's no, we, we had to have a specialty item built, okay? So it is a custom unit and the total cost of the project to install the refrigerator freezer unit and to rent for two months, the chiller box that we are gonna have to place in the Sallyport to house the food, the total cost is roughly $240,000. We are asking for project funding of $300,000, up to $300,000, just in case we have to extend an additional month of chiller box rental or if there is just some kind of unforeseen complication. I have asked Facilities Director Donna Kuntz to be available to answer any questions you might have about the specifics of this equipment and I, I'm, I'm sure she'd be happy to do that if you have additional questions. This project's gonna last about five weeks, conservatively speaking. This project's going to last about five weeks, conservatively speaking.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that I have kids older than the walk-in freezer that you guys are talking about.
Same!
So, and I was gratified to see that we are using a local vendor within the county. That's always good to see, and we were certainly pleased about that. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, quick question for probably the county administrator, funding for this. It's ARPA interest, right?
Correct.
Do we have any ARPA money, non-interest money, that can be used for this? Let me clarify that. My understanding is that there's no strings attached to the interest, but for the ARPA money...
That's correct. And so all our ARPA money is spoken for.
Okay.
Right? It's all tied up in projects. We do have the interest. You, in the 25 budget, authorized using $600,000 of the interest to replace the roof on the Rooney Justice Center. That's already approved in the budget. We still have funding and interest for this project, and we still have some unallocated interest that, from ARPA, that we're holding in case any of our ARPA projects run over budget. But we felt comfortable that we could allocate $300,000 of the interest for this one-time expenditure.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any extra money that we're going to lose or give back.
We don't, and even if we did, I would question just exactly which pocket it would fall into. Remember, with the ARPA funding, it had to be, you know, either for economic recovery or the stop the spread of COVID. I'm not sure the freezer would, refrigerator would. Unfortunately, it's just a piece of equipment and had its life expectancy expire, so.
Okay.
I was going to say, if you wanted to make a motion, we can still have discussion, and Commissioner Carpenter can have a say, so whichever you guys want to do.
As crazy as it sounds, I'm going to make the motion to approve $300,000 to keep food cold. But move to approve 2025-60.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-60. Further discussion, Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. So I'm sure that I'll be voting yes, and obviously we have to do it, you know, so... But on that point, I would just like a brief discussion about... You know, we did this as a term and supply rather than going out to bid. Did I have that right?
Yes, and there were some reasons for that. This is a... I apologize. Let you finish your question.
Oh, no, go ahead, please.
Okay. Like I said, we became aware that this was a... That the unit was having some issues in late 2024. And so that becomes important because clearly, if we had known that this was going to happen, we would have made some effort to budget for it, but there was no indication that the unit was going to fail the way that it has. It's my understanding that the walls of this unit are like four inches thick, but underneath it is a significant amount of ice that we're going to have to thaw out after we remove the old unit. So we did not realize the nature of the problem when we thought, oh, well, it's just not keeping cool. No, it was significantly greater problem than that. So there was the issue of time. This was a time-sensitive issue. And rather than going out to bid for... I mean, clearly, we could have, but again, this is not a cut-and-paste type of situation. This was something where they were going to have to come in and replicate what was already in place. And given the time sensitivity, facilities and detention staff thought that it was better to go with a vendor we already had in place.
Thank you, and definitely helpful to know and trust y'all's judgment on making that decision, certainly. Just one follow-up question is just, in general, and this would be for you, for Facilities Manager, for County Administrator, anybody who wants to... Do we have any sense of, like, size of the project when we're making that decision? That consideration between doing a term and supply versus going out to bid? Because obviously, you know, the smaller, to me anyway intuitively, the smaller the amount, the less sort of necessary it feels to get multiple bids. You know, at $240,000, it's a more sizable purchase. And so I just, a brief discussion about those considerations would be helpful to me, I think.
Yeah, I think, you know, when those things arise, there are a lot of things that we take into consideration. You're correct. I mean, that's one of the reasons we ought to bid and have term and supply contracts is, you know, we've sort of already bid that aspect assigned to those particular vendors, and they're sort of already vetted vendors that we can utilize for programs. In this particular case, many times it becomes, is it a, you know, is it sort of an emergency type of purchase as opposed to going through a formal bid process? And because of the nature of it failing and the cost that, when it does fail, we'd have to bring in temporary... We felt like the time was of the essence on this one and felt like using our term and supply, if they could meet those needs, was the best solution for the county. So it is not only just price, but it's also what's driving the need, the timing of it, so.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other further discussion or questions from commissioners?
Two more.
Commissioner Johnson?
Two more quick questions. First of all, just for people listening, can you give us an idea of the scope or the size of this walk-in freezer, roughly square footage? If you know, I was trying to find it in here.
Well, let me see. I have this...
And in addition to that, how many people a day are you feeding?
Oh, okay, so obviously, it fluctuates, but, I mean, we're in the mid-to-upper 300s in our detention center.
300 plus, three times a day?
Three times a day, yes. And, you know, we no longer have trustees working in the kitchen, and so we have our contracted staff through Tiger Food Services. And those folks are... They're feeding that many inmates three meals a day, yeah. So it's a considerable task.
And when we talk about freezer, this isn't your scratch and dent that you buy from Sears down the street. This is your, this is actually like a room?
It's a room, yes, yes.
Like a 10 by 10 or...
I feel like it's bigger than that. The last time I was down there, yes, I mean, I have been in this unit. I think that Donna has the specifics of the size, but, I mean, think of like a 12 by 16-foot, like, bedroom. I mean, it's, yeah, it's large.
Yeah, so I just wanted anybody listening to know, that's why it's so expensive. So thank you, and I close.
Very well. The motion has been made for the approval of 2025-60. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington? Motion passes, six zero.
Thank you. With that, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. Administrator? We have one item under discussion. If you would like to introduce that?
Certainly. What we have before you this evening for discussion is the Classification and Compensation Study Report and Recommendation. And Human Resources Director Kim Callahan is here to introduce the program.
Please proceed.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Kim Callahan, HR Director. We're here today to present the findings of the recently completed compensation and classification study for Clay County. It's hard to believe, but this started last March of 2024 with the bid process, and in May, the contract was awarded to McGrath. In June, they conducted interviews with administration, HR, and department heads. July through September, over 250 position questionnaires were completed by our employees. September through December, McGrath developed draft compensation and classification systems, conducted benefits review, and drafted policy and system maintenance recommendations. They did an assessment of fiscal costing and FLSA review of positions. We understand that this is a significant undertaking, and we are committed to providing you with the information and support you need to make informed decisions. We believe that the recommendations presented today will help Clay County build a stronger, more sustainable workforce and ultimately better serve the residents of our community. So today, I want to introduce Melania Halverson-Maze. She's the Senior Consultant for McGrath to walk through the key findings of the study, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Melania Halverson-Maze, McGrath Human Resources Group, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be in front of the commission to go through, there we go, to go through this project. The goal here for me this evening is to walk through the 55-some-odd-page report that you received, and I want to just talk about some high-level pieces so that you understand that, have an opportunity to ask questions, and then you can proceed with your next steps. All right, here we go. Let's... I am not always the best when it comes to technologies. I got a little bit of coursework when we got started, so. All right. So what I'd like to do here this evening is just start from a little bit of a higher-level perspective and talk about what's happening on a nationwide basis in terms of recruitment and retention as it pertains to the public sector. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to start drilling down a little bit closer to what's happening within your organization, and then we're going to talk specifically about your project. So we've had quite a roller coaster in terms of recruitment and retention all across the United States. I assist employers that are at the public sector level, and the firm is supporting upwards of 40 different states. And so we spend a lot of time with other clients, and so we get a national perspective. What's happened in the past couple of years is what is lovingly called the quiet crisis. It's the crisis that no one really necessarily wants to talk about in the public sector, but you are losing more human capital than what you have coming back into the organization. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but the top ones are really of what's currently happening. And number one is compensation. Now, compensation has not always been number one, but it is number one right now, given the market that we are in. You also are competing against the private sector in a lot of positions where you have like-type, your education and your experience, there is transferable to the private sector, and they pay a little bit different than the public sector does. And so you have that influence, and you have that sector that is absolutely poaching your current workforce. Sometimes people feel that there's a lack of growth opportunity. That would be that there's not really necessarily a career path that goes in public sector. Sometimes that is the case, and we work through that with our clients. And then we have the poaching, which I already discussed. But the last item, and this is really becoming more of a generational difference here, is the remote work and the work balance options. Because the new workforce coming in, they really have an expectation of having a little bit of a different work balance and wanting their time off versus the individuals that are leaving the workforce. And sometimes, public sector cannot necessarily adhere to that because you have constituents coming into your facilities. They need to see somebody in person, and so you can't always accommodate remote work options. And it really does put the private sector, I'm sorry, the public sector at a disadvantage with that. So there's other reasons why the public sector seems to be challenged right now. We'll talk a little bit more about it. But what we started to see in the market is that things are starting to cool, just a little bit. But things are what we would call very fragile at this point. And, you know, we know that there's a lot of government growth that's still happening. We know that there's a lot of positions that are still open. And organizations have had to make adjustments to the minimum qualifications of those positions because what they're trying to do is get individuals into those positions and not necessarily worrying about whether or not they have the total skill set or not, and they might be willing to train them up. Now, that is, it's absolutely okay to do. You need to make sure that you are established. You've got the resources to do that. You've got the training to be able to do that. So there's still a significant struggle that's happening in the public sector. I think that, you know, again, things are going to calm down a little bit, but we still do have some hard positions to fill. They're very technical. You know, these are inspectors and engineers. There are also going to be nurses and social workers. I know that you don't have all of those positions here at the county, but more on a national level. And your law enforcement is also a very, very difficult profession to be in right now, and we're going to talk about them here in a little bit. Also, on the national level, there's always this question of, it seems like we did, we've been doing so much. We've given the, we've made these big adjustments to the salary ranges in recent years. We've given dollars to the employees. Why does it feel like we just can't keep up? And this stair step really is a good visual of what in the world is going on. Because what we found here, really right before COVID started, is you had about a third of the public sector workforce across the nation that's eligible to retire. They've earned that opportunity, and they're going to go start the next phase of their life. And so you've got a lot of people who started leaving the workforce already before the pandemic. Then the pandemic hit, and, you know, it kind of felt like the wheels were coming off. And organizations really were just trying to hold everything together, and employees just decided that they were done. Thank you, and I'm going to leave. And that there was not necessarily a good rebound after that. Those individuals that left public sector, a lot of them just simply did not come back. You've had the economic growth, so you've had that private sector that really is, you know, is giving you a little bit of a run for your money. And because of that, you experienced a lot of what we call the Great Resignation. We had people who, they can go work in the community next door, or they can go work in the private sector, and that is where a lot of the poaching was occurring. You could probably talk with Human Resources, and they will be able to give you examples of... We have employees that weren't even necessarily looking, and they got a phone call, and someone wants their skill set, and away they went. And now we are dealing with inflation, and although that really is calming down a lot, what the employees are feeling is that the value of their dollar isn't stretching quite the way that it used to. And it's just continuing. You're fighting an uphill battle. We're waiting to see what the next stair is. Hopefully, we're at a little bit of a landing for a while so that most of the employers can take a collective breath. So that's what's happening on the national level. Now, let's take a look at what's happening within Clay County. And this is really kind of some interesting information. I'm a data person, and this entire study was built on data. This is your employees, and what we have done is, we have banded them by their age and by their years of service so that we can analyze what in the world is going on with your workforce. First of all, congratulations. The average tenure within the organization is just shy of nine years. And nationally, at the local public sector level, that retention period or that tenure rate is about 6.4 years. So you are actually beating the national average, which means something is going well here, and that's very positive for the organization. But you do need to take a look at who's coming and who's going. And right now, what we can see is that you have about 15% of your employees who are age 60 and over, which means that, I'm sorry, you have 15% that are age 60 and over, but you have an additional 12% that are in their late 50s, and those individuals are going to get ready to start planning their retirement. So you have upwards of about a quarter of your employees. Over the course of the next several years, they're going to retire out. Again, they earn that privilege, and they want to go start the rest of their career, which means you've got about a quarter of your workforce that's going to be new coming into the organization. So our thoughts are, with that, we do need to be careful. We need to be considerate of your salary ranges to make sure that you're competitive for the recruitment of the loss of that workforce. Then we also, if you take a look at the chart on the far-left-hand side that says percentage of employees by age, what we're seeing here is that you have almost 40% of your workforce that's under the age of 40. Now, this group is really interesting because they are much more mobile. They are willing to go work elsewhere. They know the value, or their perceived value, and they will go seek it out. They are not necessarily dedicated to the organization like your long-term employees are. Those are the ones that are a little bit more of a flight risk. And so we do need to be very concerned about retention for you as an organization. And I do want to say that, you know, you do have the 40-somethings and the 50-somethings. They are very well-experienced individuals, and this is why they get poached, because no one wants to be able to do the retraining on that. Now, if you look at your years of service there, very, very high levels of years of service that matches, that absolutely matches your tenure. Now, however, I want to talk about, this is where the top chart is those employees and their years of service so that you can see what that looks like. You've got a large clustering at the very beginning, and then you've got a very large cluster towards the end. But I want to really draw attention to the bottom chart, which is years in position. You, even though you have a pretty good tenure going on, 76% of your workforce has been in their position for less than five years. And so even though you're a tenured organization, you're not really necessarily an experienced organization because individuals are still working on trying to figure out what their position is. Five years is not a long time, especially in certain positions where it might take several years to be able to get yourself up and feeling like, yep, I'm able to do this position proficiently. So one of the things that we do want to make sure, not only is that recruitment, but just really stressing the retention, because what you have here is, this is your succession planning for the... planning for the organization as you start losing that quarter of your personnel.
Got a moment, Commissioner Johnson, you had something you wanted to require?
Yeah, quick question. Go back to that last slide. Talks about years in current position. You talk about the, uh, experience. You don't, you don't look at all or take into consideration the amount of experience they bring with them, do they?
We do not. We cannot, um, we, we, we can't even, we don't, we won't know what that information is. And the, um, the human resources department have to go back and physically look at all applications to be able to know that. But it's a good point because people could come in with previous experience and we won't know it.
Certainly we've hired some people, I mean, I'm looking at the audience right now, several people that we hired to have a lot of experience that they come in with. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
While we are paused, does anyone else have any questions that they'd like to pose at this moment? Please proceed.
And if any questions, if you have questions along the way, that's absolutely fine because I, I, I do have a lot of material and I want to make sure that everyone is, is, um, is understanding everything. So now let's talk about your project. And there really are two primary areas that we want to talk about. And the first one is what your compensation system is and the second one is what your classification system is. And even though people talk about comp and class together, those really are two very separate items. And your, your compensation system is the structure by which you are going to compensate your employees. And what it's going to do is it's going to align the position to that market along with their, their position responsibilities. And what we do then is we align those based upon the compensation philosophy or the strategy of the county. We're going to talk about that for you here in just a moment. The other part of this though, is the classification system, which most people very typically will call the job titles, which, uh, outlines really a hierarchy within the organization. Sometimes they're going to have levels like a career leveling or maybe various levels, um, of, of a position just because of the needs of, of the departments as well. The position, uh, the classification structure, it is intended to be based upon your skills, upon the qualifications. It might even be the education. There's a lot of different characteristics about the positions. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail, but it's not about the person. And this, um, this is a very important part of our, of our discussion, uh, that we have at the beginning of the project when we're talking with department directors, all the way to the very end when we're finalizing everything. Because, um, we're looking at building a system for the organization, the entity as a whole. We're not necessarily talking about individual employees, even though this is a very personal item for a lot of those employees. So, um, as, uh, the HR director had indicated, we had a very set methodology that we used. Uh, and just very, very quickly to, to run through that again, when we first met, uh, with the organization, we met with your administration, HR, we met with your department heads, your office holders. There were times when we, you know, invited them to bring in some of their managers. And what we did was we learned an overview of their operations, uh, what those positions were responsible for, if they had any inherent challenges that were happening. Do they have a lot of turnover in any particular area? That gives us an opportunity to really, uh, understand the department at a, at a little bit more detailed level. And then we reviewed a lot of data that the HR department was able to give us, your, your current compensation, your job descriptions, that demographic information, and then your policies. Uh, as, uh, previously indicated, we did engage the employees in what's called a position questionnaire process. And this is very important because this is the opportunity to hear from the employees what their responsibilities really truly are. And that helps us understand, all right, are you in the proper classification? Do you have the correct title? What are your responsibilities and how, how do we develop that within, within the current system? After that then, um, or while the employees were completing that exercise, um, we also then, we went out to the market and we collected market data from public comparable organizations. We're going to talk about who those individual, um, organizations are in a minute. And we collected multiple data points. We collect the minimum, the midpoint, the maximum, and then we also, uh, will collect incumbent, uh, data so that we understand what, uh, actual counterparts are earning, um, in addition to what those salary ranges are. There were also circumstances where we did visit with the private sector to get that information. It's a little bit more difficult because if, if everyone, you know, understands that public sector, we're very transparent, we're very open about our wages, but private sector is not necessarily the same. And so we always go into this knowing that, you know, we're, that's probably more of what the minimum of the private sector is offering. We don't necessarily always know what the maximum is.
If you could pause for a moment, Commissioner Johnson?
To me again. Question about that, uh, last, saying last bullet item there. Prevailing wage. Do you look at all at prevailing wage? That was a discussion that was had actually prior to this committee, well, three of the commissioners that were on us before, the rest of us, discuss prevailing wage. And we talked about prevailing wage for our contract employees. Is that factored into any of our own employees?
No. It is not. Nope, we did not look at prevailing wage.
Okay. Is there any reason why you do or don't?
Well, we've done that up in, say, the state of Alaska and, um, you know, with very specific, uh, duties, responsibilities, um, positions. When we met with all of the departments, we asked them who they felt their comparable organizations or comparable entities were. Uh, that didn't come out in the conversation that individuals were concerned, uh, that, that they were concerned with prevailing wage. If it had, if it had percolated up in any conversation, we probably would have at least discussed it, but it wasn't even any, uh, an item that was brought to the table.
So they weren't really comparing themselves to private sector essentially?
Well, you know, it depends on the type of position certainly, right? I mean, we can go out and we can know what, you know, your, your frontline customer service is paying, what your administrative assistants are paying, maybe what your entry-level account clerks are paying. Uh, you know, there are going to be some of those transferable skills, but if we're looking at, you know, boiler technicians or electricians or things of that nature, um, then I, then I would say no, because, you know, really truly then, the, the, I would call that, you know, the, the white papers or your prevailing wages absolutely are going to be the controlling factor of that, because everyone is paying that for those particular contracts.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And then when we were all done with this, uh, when we developed our recommendations, then we came back here. I was here during, uh, shortly after your large, um, 12-inch snowstorm in January to meet with all of the department directors to give them an introduction of those recommendations. The, um, some slight modifications were made. One more, um, discussion occurred with the departments just on job titles at the, um, towards the end of the project. So one of the things that we talked about with directors, like I had talked about, um, during the onset of our meetings was who are your comparable organizations? And we asked the question of who are you losing your human capital to? Who do you look to gain your human capital from? Who's in your immediate region? And who might be other counties that are similarly, um, situated to you within the state? And this is the outcome of that particular conversation. We have a blend of counties and then we also have some local cities as well. This is also in the report. All right. So first let's talk about your, let's talk about what we found when we went out to the market. Uh, when, like I said, we collect the minimum, the midpoint and the maximum. And then what we'll do is we analyze that, that data set when, at a, at a pretty granular level at, at the depart, at the position level. And, um, what we will do then, once we have analyzed that, is, uh, we will compare what the county is earning against that aggregate number for each of those positions. And then we come up with our data points. We call that a comp ratio, a comparison ratio between you and the rest of those entities. The closer your number is to 50%, the better. That means that you are aligned to the market. So if you're paying $20 and all of your other counterparts are paying $20, that would be a 50% comp ratio. Now we can accept a little bit plus minus. Right now the market really does allow you to go down to 45%, but I will say that even in, at, in some instances, in some industries, a 45% comp ratio can be very challenging right now. And so, um, what you're going to find is that I've color-coded these just so that they're a little bit quicker on the eyes. And we have put those positions, um, at what we call at risk because they could be market competitive, but, but they may, they may not always be. So this is what your overall outcome looks like when we look at all of your minimums against the rest of the market. And what we found overall in the yellow is that 52% of the positions that we were able to benchmark, which we tried to get at least 85% of your positions are, um, are under, are too far below the market in order to be market competitive. What that means then is that there's, um, at, for at least over half of your positions, you're not going to be bringing people in at the minimum. The challenge also with the minimum is that you can have a published minimum, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's where an organization's bring a person in. Much like Clay County, you have authorized department directors to be able to bring, uh, in their people higher than that. You have 13% at risk and then you have a true about one-third of those positions that were squarely doing okay at the minimums. Now we take a look at your midpoint. You're actually doing a little bit better at your midpoint where you've got only about 45% that are under the market, a few more are at risk. And then you've got about 40% that are aligned to the market. And then this is your maximum. So very, very similar in terms of the trend. Um, and so, you know, I don't, I didn't put all of the stats on the maximums because, you know, there's a time when we say, you know, your compensation strategy is, you know, could cut those maximums off. And we know every organization, um, has that individualized discussion. And so, you know, we have to look at those maximums, uh, very carefully. The last item is, we took a look at your actual employees, uh, by position to say, all right, how are you doing in terms of, um, actual salaries against the actual salaries of their counterparts? Now, this is not a perfect graph because we do not consider how the time and position of those other comparable organizations either. So this is really literally a snapshot of how are they doing? And what we found here, um, is that 56% of your positions on average, the average of their positions are earning less than your market counterparts. Okay?
Do you have one, uh, question?
Okay.
Guess who? Um, quick question. You might've already said this. Is this salaries or total compensation that we're looking at?
We're talking wages only.
Salaries only. Is there a comparison of total compensation that you do?
Wages only. This one is wages only.
So we, so we'll never, we won't know total compensation then?
So are you talking about, um, when we're adding in the re, the retirement and the insurances and, and all of that nature?
Total compensation, yeah. Take-home cars, everything.
Yeah. So what we did was, um, we, we broke down your health insurance so that you can see how you're doing against the market later in the report. We also spent, we put a little bit into the retirement that, that, um, we were asked to take a look at. Um, so it, you know, we could, we could have calculated the total compensation. Normally what we do for that is we would take, we would take some select positions to be able to run that calculation so that you could see what your total picture is against, um, that total picture. The challenge with that is, and, and I, cause I know, I know right where you're, you're going with that. The challenge sometimes becomes, um, not everybody will elect insurance, not, you know, and so, um, you know, those are individual decisions and they may be, they may be things that bring a person to the county, but the wages right now really absolutely is the driver. And if you don't, if you don't have the wages, it's probably not going to help with the benefits package. You gotta have it, you have to have the wages and then you can bring in the, you can bring in the, the benefits in order to give yourself that well-rounded package. But this does not, this is looking at base wages to base wages.
Yeah. And my concern wasn't just, wasn't so much the health insurance, because those are fairly similar, I would think. And I don't know about other agencies in, in Missouri, but if there's some that offer like astronomical, you know, 401K plan, you know, matching plans, that we put, you know, a ton of money in your 401K that doesn't go in your salary, because there's some advantages of doing that.
Yep.
Um, and then the take-home car situation too. If you have a take-home car that you can use for personal use as well, that's pretty, that's pretty pricey. Um, but, but we're not looking at any of that stuff.
Nope. We're not looking at any of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Um, I'll ask the R Administrator. What do you think the percentage of people are total staff that do not take our health insurance?
Oh, I'd have to defer to Director Callahan. She may know. I mean, we have some, and remember-
Just ballpark.
Kim, you may know. And I would remind the commission, just this year, remember that we went, I think it was 25, um, where we're paying 100% for an employee if they take the, the base plan. Um, and so we have some that, you know, don't take, I think almost everybody probably takes some insurance for us. We may have a few that don't.
I think the last report I saw, uh, employees was 469.
Pardon?
469.
Take it.
Mm-hmm.
How many don't take it?
Well, we have 556.
Oh, okay. So almost all of them take it.
Some of those are part-time that aren't eligible, but yeah.
Yeah, I think that would've been a wise thing to have the, the total.
All right. Okay. So that's how you're looking against the market. Now let's take a look at your current compensation or your salary system, uh, and, and what we have going on with that. You have, you currently have a range model. You have a 50% spread from the minimum to maximum. That's not atypical of a range, uh, model necessarily, but you do have some interesting, unique characteristics. You only have 14 pay grades for the number of positions that you have. And, uh, what we find when you have that few of pay grades, um, and you have a pretty substantial separation between those pay grades, is, uh, you might have positions that don't necessarily have the same characteristics or don't have the same market. And there's so much spacing in between that means that you either have maybe positions that are going to be elevated higher than they need to be in the market, or they're pushed lower than they need to be in the market. And so that is one of the challenges that your system, that your system currently has. The other challenges that you have is more policy level or policy type items as it relates to the current system. And what you have right now, when we had those meetings, those, um, onboarding meetings with the departments, we were talking about salary increases, is that the organization right now is, is allowing the departments to make salary adjustment decisions based upon if they have a vacant position or, you know, they're gonna, okay, we're gonna take a few dollars and then we're gonna reallocate it out. And so there's been a lot of inconsistency in the application of, of, of wage increases and that it makes it feel pretty inequitable when, um, departments are talking about, you know, they have to kind of fight for their wage increase versus others that are saying, you know, we're trying to give them, um, you know, like, you know, we just gotta try to give them as much as we possibly can. And you've got, you know, quite a dichotomy there. And what we want to do as an organization is, you know, for the county commissioners to say, you know, this really, we want this to be the philosophy and the policy of the county. We want for all of our employees to be treated in a very specific way. The, the other part of this that has happened historically is whenever an employee has gotten to the maximum, then, um, it, because there is, um, the, the, the county, um, does not recognize anyone being over the maximum, um, over the maximum of salary ranges, then they just slide them into the next pay grade. Well, suddenly there's no internal equity that's happening because they're simply getting pushed to the next pay grade because, because they're, they've, they've hit the max of their, of their salary range. And every position has to have a maximum. I know that there's a lot of times an argument about that, but what, if you, you know, when we've seen this, organizations that do not have maximums and you walk in and you see a very entry-level position that is not necessarily a skilled position, they've been there for 30 years and they are earning more than maybe somebody who has a, you know, a master's degree type of position. And it's because they haven't stopped, that they haven't put a maximum onto those wages. And so, um, you know, that has been the county's solution and has caused some inequities that, um, that we have fixed. So when we, after we met with, um, administration to, to, you know, give them an overview of where you are at in the market, one of the things that we talked about was, all right, where do we go from here? You have a range model and there's a lot of inconsistency that's being used with that model, but you as an organization have options, uh, and how we structure your compensation. You can, uh, utilize a step model, you can continue to do the range model, or you could do a combination where you're doing some steps and then the rest of it is ranges. All of those have pros and cons. I am not going to read all of this on the screen here for you this evening, but I'll just give you a couple of highlights. The step model is a structured, uh, it's a range, but it's very structured where we make the determination by formula, what the progression is going to be. It's very easy to administer. Your employees understand what their pathway is. Um, and it's very, um, it's, it's, you know, got some administrative ease for, for budgeting purposes. Um, it is, you can, you can introduce a performance element to it. I do recommend that you do that and it does not have to be a sophisticated model. Or you have the, what you currently have, which is the range model and you have a lot of flexibility with it, but you also don't necessarily have parameters or guardrails that are in place for your departments, and so that's why everyone really is utilizing it in the manner that they feel is best. And then you have the step-range combination, which is you get yourselves into a step for a period of time and then you range it for the rest. After the discussions with, with the departments and with your administration, our recommendation is that the county move towards a step model. It's more structured at this point, your employees can, they understand what's going to happen, you can introduce performance if you, if you would like, but the, the intent of that is, is that it's going to be very, it's very mechanical, it's very easy to administer, and all the employees are going to be treated in the, in the same, in the same manner, okay? That they don't have to worry about whether or not a vacancy is going to help them receive any type of a wage increase. There is some management of this model that we are going to have to talk about a little bit towards the end, because, you know, one of the things that we want to make sure that you do is, you know, we spent a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of energy, both, you know, at the county level and McGrath, redeveloping this, and we want you to be able to sustain this going forward so that you don't start to fall back in the market. We'll talk about how to manage that then going forward. The other part that we talked about then was compensation philosophy and where do, where does Clay County want to position themselves philosophically in the market? Most organizations, well, all organizations really have three options, and that first option is, is that you want to be a leader of the market, and, and that would mean then that, you know, if you have this array of data that we, that we received from all of those organizations, where is the pin for Clay County? If you want to be towards the top, we're probably going to be talking about anywhere from the 60th to the 80th percentile. It means that you're probably going to be the highest payer, if not the second highest payer in your region. Can you afford that? Do you want to do that? The other options that you have is to be average to the market. That means about half of the organizations are going to pay more than you and half are going to pay less. That's where most organizations land. And then you do have some organizations that absolutely just cannot reach the, the market at all, they have a fiscal consideration where it just does not allow them to be anything over the 40th percentile, and they want to, but they can't. I think that there is a, a general consensus, you are a very large organization, you're very complex, you want to be a leader, and, and I think that you've got a lot internally where you could establish yourselves, you know, to be at the top of the market or be a little bit higher than the average of the market if this is something that the commissioners wish to do. However, given the dollars that are being associated to the project, I felt it was going to be better to propose to you average compensation at this time, and then if the Commission wishes to change that in the future, then that can be a financial goal that you can work on. So with that then, I am offering, and, and we call it a compensation statement, you can put it in your policies, you can put it in your employee handbook, you can adopt it, you can tweak it, but it really is the statement that talks about wanting to attract and retain your qualified workforce and make sure that you're providing equitable market, competitive compensation, and that you're committed to paying the 50th percentile. Certainly this is for you to consider and, and, you know, to potentially take action on. All right, so with all of those building blocks, now we, let's talk about what we built for you. And first and foremost, we established you at the 50th percentile. That means when you look at this, and you might get some feedback from a department director that says, I know that the community next door pays more than us in this particular area, and they may not necessarily be wrong because we aligned you to the average. We created two different salary schedules for you. We created a general salary schedule and then we created what I've called the 24/7 model, which that is going to be for specific positions in the sheriff's office and also with, with the juvenile services. The reason why I've separated the, I've separated that, I'm going to talk about this in another slide coming up, is that it is, I think, going to be better for the organization if you need to be response, we have a different response to the wages of those positions that you can do so without really challenging what's going on with that general salary schedule. And, you know, just simply because the nature of those positions in the market right now is so very, very challenging. The ranges that you have seen, they are set for 2025, so you are good for the rest of the year. And what we created then is a step model, and there are 20 steps. It's, I will admit that this is a pretty big system, and the, the reason why is in red on the very, very bottom. There are 23 pay grades, so you're going from 14 grades to 23 grades, and in most circumstances, we have 6% separation between those grades, so we've got a good amount so that we are handling the, the compression, but not so much that we run the risk that we're putting positions higher than they need to be in the market. We anchored you to the market at step 10. That's probably not going to mean a whole lot to you, but that is the whole, that's the, the actual midpoint, and we, we, we established your steps at 2% increments. What, now what that means is, that's a really, that's a relatively, I don't want to say it's a low number, but it's probably the lowest that we want to go for you. And the reason why is because part of our maintenance plan for you is to put a cost-of-living adjustment on that every year. So the employee will get the COLA and they're going to get a step increase in between the two of them, then you're going to, you know, you, you should do well by being able to maintain the market. And that employee progression should be annual, obviously it has to be or should be based on adequate performance. Now there's two items that I want to talk about when you look at, when you look at the structure, and I'm going to show it on the, on the next slide here, is that I did build for you a legacy lane, and that is because you do have a couple of employees that are above that step 20. They are higher than what the market would demand, but we're not in a position, I do not recommend cuts in pay, and so what we, what we do recommend is what we call red circle situations. After the conversation that I had with your auditor, your, your county auditor, and, you know, not, that, you know, that's really not necessarily a, a situation that, that the county wants because, you know, it's going to be higher than the published rates, I created what's called a legacy lane. What that is, is it is an extra area on the salary schedule for the individuals who are above the maximum to stay in that lane until such time that they attrit and they go away. No one should ever, no one who's not in, going to be in that lane as of the date of implementation be allowed in the lane. So step 20 is the maximum for everybody else, and then as soon, when those, when those individuals attrit away, the legacy lane then also goes away. We're only talking about a handful of people. The other thing is, is that in a, in, if we had our druthers about us and we had a really unlimited checkbook, I would be recommending that you get rid of steps one through four and that you start your model at step five, and I think that that's a goal for the county. The reason being, your market is at step 10, and when you think about how long the employees have to step before they get to that true market point at 2%, it's, it's a while, it takes a minute. And, you know, that, there's a financial cost to moving all of your employees that far up into the salary ranges, which is why it is, it's a goal for you that I'd like to see you start chiseling away at the next couple of years, okay? That's why you have 20 steps, because long-term, I'm hoping that you'll be able to shave that down to steps five through 20. And this is what it looks like, and for the people in the audience, I'm so sorry, but this is, it's a test, it's a test on your eyes, but this is in the back of the final report. All right. This 24/7 model, again, 50th percentile, and we've separated this, I already explained why, because I need you to have the flexibility to be responsive in a different manner if you need to be for this, for this group of positions. This one is set up a little bit differently. It is still a step structure, but it, now it's only 14 steps, and I made those, the value of those steps 3%, and I did that because of the nature of, the, the nature of the work, and I was afraid that if we go 2%, you're going to continue to struggle with the recruiting and the retention for the, these areas, and that's why there's only 14 steps. So we have 3% values, 14 steps. In this particular model, you're anchored at step nine, and so all things equal to the other, the other model, I would like for you to work at chiseling away on steps one through three in the future, so your step four, you know, is only within a few steps of step nine, which is your true market point. So, some future work to work on. And this one is a little bit better for you on the eyes, but again, it's, it's probably not going to be very clear. This one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that is the structure. Now we got to start talking about the classifications. So first and foremost, when we place positions onto the, onto the range, because that's often a, a question that, that is asked of us, is, alright, how do you make that determination? And we have, we have four, what I call cornerstones that we use to do this placement. Number one, and, and has a lot of, of weight, not the, maybe necessarily the greatest weight always, but it has a lot of weight, is what that external market tells us. Number two is that position analysis. What did we learn about the position? Number three will be internal comparability. Maybe we've got a little bit of deviation going on, but does the organization want to align those together? And number four is compression, or the separation of those salary ranges, or those positions into different salary ranges. We did discuss all of the placements with the department heads and the placeholders to give their feedback, and this is again, kind of that reminder of, you know, at this point, you know, sometimes people start talking about the employees, and again, this is still, we really are simply just talking about the positions, we're not talking about the people who hold the, the positions. Where we're, and a lot of times what I have to ask departments is, if you, if your person left and you needed to backfill the position, what are you going to be looking for in a skill set? So that we're talking about the position, not the person. That classification process, that position analysis that we do is based on primarily, primarily 13 different characteristics, and those are listed here on the screen, the PowerPoint. I'm not going to read all of them off, but please just know that we have a pretty comprehensive look at all of those positions, and those characteristics we know are going to vary position by position. With that then, there are going to be some classification updates that you see. Job titles have changed, absolutely, and what we've tried to do is align those positions properly to that, to that job title. We've tried to be consistent across the organization of an assistant, a tech, a specialist, a supervisor, a manager, so on, so forth. Levels that we are, that we have developed, we need to make sure that they are objectively different and that that is measurable and defendable, because if someone, you know, wants to file a claim and, you know, they're claiming discrimination, the county needs to be able to defend that. The last item that we took a look at is your FLSA, it's called the Fair Labor Standards Act, and this determines whether or not a position is going to earn overtime or not. And historically, the county has, it appears that the departments made that determination, and that is not the case. You, you make that determination based upon the position of responsibilities, the law is very clear, there are many different exemptions that a, that a position might qualify for, and you have to test that position to see if they're going to pass that test, because the, you know, if you get it wrong, it's a pretty heavy lift with the federal government. So we've given our recommendations of the exemptions for the county, and that will result in some positions that used to be exempt are now going to be hourly, and that is because we say you will not pass the test if you are challenged by the Department of Labor. All right, so you have your system, you have your classifications, now how do you manage it going forward? There's, really it's, it's very simple, but yet it, it does, it's not very simple. And so, you know, one of, one of the things that we've, what we're trying to do here for you is give you a structure that can work for you for, you know, the next decade if that is what you, if that's what you, if that's what's going to work for you. We have some organizations that have the same salary structure that they've had for that long, and they simply just do a market update, you know, every few years. So what we want you to do is on an annual basis, make a determination on an economic change, and that is what we call a COLA or a cost-of-living adjustment. That is going to help you retain that 50th percentile. The rest of the world around you is going up in, in their ranges, and we need you to follow suit with that so that you retain that position. Then the steps is really the mechanics that allow the employee to be able to do the progression. That means your employees will receive a COLA and a step increase that can happen at the same time each year, or it can happen at different times each year. You can do that for as long as you need to. I do recommend that organizations do market updates every three to five years. Now this was, and, this was from, building it from the ground up, and normally when we do market updates, it's not nearly this extensive. We take a look at what's happening in the market, we give you a recommendation if anything has to, if anything has to change. And I would say, you know, I hate to say this, but the Kansas City market, you're really hard, a very tough market. And so, you know, you might want to think about, okay, we're going to do an update in three years, and pay attention to your HR metrics. Take a look at your turnover, time to hire, those types of things, because those metrics can determine if you want to push that back a year, maybe even a couple of years before you really decide that you want to go back and double-check how you're doing against the market. All right. Last but not least, let's talk about the implementation plan, and then we can talk about any questions that, that you might have. So I have an implementation strategy that we have costed out for the organization, and what we first do is, because we've got all of the positions placed within the respective grade, now we have to, now this is when we start bringing in the people, okay? And what we do is we place every employee in their classification that they're going to be assigned, and we put them on the step closest to what they were earning without taking a decrease. And for some folks then, that means they're going to go from $20.02 to $20.03, and it's just the nature of whatever that, that step is, okay? That gets, that just gets the ball rolling and gets them into the plan. The employee's already received a, an increase for the year, so this basically is just getting the process started. However, we did give some consideration to trying to push employees a little bit further into the ranges. So if they are employees that are in steps one through four, then we place them two additional steps up to try to get them pushed in, and if they're on steps five through eight on the 24/7 model, we gave them one more step, five-through-nine model, or the, the general model, they were also given one additional step, and that's to try to get them closer to that step nine or step 10, that market point. And then you do have those legacy, those legacy wages. Now, you might be asking how much this is going to cost, and the $1.2 million is a, it's kind, it's kind of a, it's, it's an incomplete picture, but it's worthy of discussion and the county administrator might have to, might have to join in this conversation. So what we, when we looked at your, your budget, what the organization has is, your dollars are at about $32 million and some odd change for your personal costs, but fortunate for you, you have budgeted more than that. You have budgeted, I think probably about $36 million. And so, and that's, I'm, I'm absolutely rounding at this point. So the delta or the difference of what we needed in order to make this implementation strategy that you see on the screen work was about, is about $1.2 million. Those dollars, as I understand it, are budgeted, they are allocated, they were, they were dollars that were set aside for the implementation of the study. So I'm pleased to say that I, 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 I'm before you here to say that we've got the money to be able to cover this implementation for you.
Commissioner Lawson, I think you wanted to ask a question?
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, Diana, we voted to give a certain percentage, how does that play into this?
Sure, so as she indicated, the numbers that she's working on, that the, the employee's current salary that she's put into this plan to come up with this implementation cost is after the employees got their 5%.
Okay, yep.
Or detention officers got their 7,000, or the prosecutor's office got their 8%. All that happened already, and the employees have been benefiting from that. So moving, putting them on the step that they would belong to, most of them are, are going to get a little bit of an increase just getting to the step, and because we are able then to move them maybe two steps more or one step more for those that are on the lower steps, that will be an additional increase that they would see this year.
Okay.
And so, I'm going to elaborate a little bit more on how we're going to fund that, because to do all that, I think, that's, that's really almost close to $4 million, right?
Yes, yes.
To do that, to take them, put them on the step closest, and for those on the, you know, one through four getting two steps, five through eight or five through nine getting one step, is, is really about $4 million. So how we're covering that is, as you recall how we budget in personnel, and I'm looking at Commissioner Wagner, we've, we've talked about this a lot. So every position has a budget, and how, when we budget in the 25, we took, one amount was budgeted for that line item, that position number, in 24, and took a time 5% or 8% or whatever. Well, the employee may not be in 24, their, their actual salary may have been less than what was budgeted in their line item, so there were savings sitting in that line item. And so we have calculated how much we have budgeted in wages versus how much everybody is making right now. is making right now, and there are additional dollars sitting there in the personnel costs. So taking that and saying, okay, departments, you don't get that anymore like you've had in the past, we're going to need it to implement this, along with the 1.2. And we have factored in, it's not just wages, because as you know, when we increase wages, we also increase costs of the county. So it's, our FICA cost goes up, our workers' comp goes up, our retirement benefits go up. And so we factored that in also, to ensure that we could cover those costs.
Okay. Now, I, I love the idea that it's not a personal thing. So if I have five people working for me, and one of them's a real go-getter, and I love that person to death, and the others I have to keep kicking all the time to do things, it not going to really matter. You're gonna, if you're at this level, you, and you have met certain criteria, then that's going to be your salary, whether you're, whichever department you're in, right?
So it's a combination of that. So as, as she indicated back a couple of slides, how we would fund this on an annual basis for budgeting, is, the first thing is, you know, we look at the, we look at the market, as we do every year, and what we've done in the past, is we do a cost of living of 5%, or we do a cost of living of 3%. And so if we have the funds, that would be the first thing we would do, which means every step would go up 3%.
Okay.
So every employee would benefit from that, just like they do now.
Good, okay.
But we would also fund the step increases, which could be 2% if you're in the general, or 3%. And that would be based upon performance.
Okay.
So to your point, if I've got a really go-getter, then they're going to get a step increase. If we have an employee that is on a performance improvement plan, or not necessarily, they may not get that step increase.
Okay.
Right? So it is, it is a combination of both.
Okay, okay.
Is what's being proposed.
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson? Two points to your last comment. We talked about cost of living adjustments. Just for clarification, we've always gone above and beyond cost of living in anticipation of this.
You're absolutely correct. And I think, going back, I think what her slide said, we want to get away from calling it cost of living, it's really a market adjustment.
Yeah.
Right? So we want to, it, cost of living is part of it, but we want to stay up with the market. So cost of living may only be 2%, but if we're hearing what all our benchmark here in the Kansas City is doing, and everybody's giving 3%, then my recommendation is, we ought to be doing 3% or 3.5% if we can afford it. It's all obviously going to be based on, you know, funding availability, but you're right. We're trying to get away from cost of living. We like to do cost of living and a little bit above, so that we're competitive in the market.
And then, prior comments, you talked about some of the salary savings from budgeted positions that aren't being paid their full budgeted amount. Were you also including salary savings from vacancies?
No. What we've done is, again, if there is a, again, you know, this is a point in time, right? So position is, some of the positions that she has vacant are not vacant anymore, since we started this process. So if it is a vacant, if it is a vacant position, but it is a budgeted approved position, then it has been put into our implementation plan.
Okay, good.
So we did not take those wages.
Perfect.
But we, we did take it, I think, at whatever that amount was, and that's where we put it on a step, even though, and showing it as a vacant position. You know, one of the things will also come into play, and this gets into the budgeting philosophy, is when we do a budget, and the position is vacant, you know, I would recommend that we don't budget for it at the minimum, because again, you know, in some of our policies that she's going to talk about, depending on it, you may want to bring somebody in at step three, or step four, or step five, or six, depending on expertise.
Yeah.
And so to some degree, vacancies from budgeting might need to be budgeted at least at the, at the market, which would be step 10 or step nine.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Whittington?
Does each step have a range, or will everybody make the same salary at that step?
I want to make sure that I understand your question. So when you look at one of these, you know, I'm just going to look at pay grade 200 has 14 steps. So every employee that's in pay grade 200 has to be on one of those 14 numbers.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, what I was asking was, if somebody got hired in at step four, but he has a little bit more qualifications, or does a better job than the other person at step four, is there a way to pay them more if they're not ready to make the jump to step five? Or is everybody going to make the same?
So i- if they're brought in at step four, everybody on step four makes the same amount of money. But if you're bringing somebody in that has experience, and we, we've kind of read that, written policies into how you hire individuals, they could bring, they might need to bring them in at step five, or they may need to bring them in at step six, depending on expertise and their background, right?
Are there any other questions before we continue? I see none, so please continue.
And this was a great segue, Commissioner, into the very next slide, which is policies. And, you know, and one of the things that we talked about was being able to allow the department director still some flexibility to be able to bring individuals in closer to that market midpoint, especially if they are experienced. Now, you know, you might struggle a little bit with what I call leapfrogging. You're bringing in a new employee that might be, you know, making more wage than an existing employee, but that really is a conversation then that the department has with Human Resources about how to best navigate that. So the new hires, you know, there can be an expectation that the departments could hire above step one. I do believe that my recommendation is that you are going to limit that to, to step nine, no greater than step nine. The promotions policy that you currently have, I'm recommending that you leave that in place. You currently have 5% for every grade up to 15%. Demotions, the policy recommendation is, is that you deal with that on case-by-case basis, because the, you know, typically a demotion is, you know, you're doing it for performance purposes, or something is happening, and you have to be responsive to what you have going on. A lateral is what we call a movement from within the same grade. They're going to a position in 120, and they're going to stay in 120. That's a lateral. We would give no wage adjustment for that. But a transfer is what it might be if you have an employee that goes down to a lower pay grade voluntarily. And what we would want you to do is, is, you know, try to find that, that step that's going to be closest to what they're earning, so that their, their decrease is minimized as much as possible. There is no, there is no, nothing that you do top of the range. If they're at the top of the range, they're at the top of the range. No one is allowed over that, with the exception of those that are in the legacy range. And then the last two items are, I've given you all of your ranges in hourly and in salary form. That salary form is based on 2,080 hours. However, when you have part-time folks, they should be budgeted at the number of hours that the department expects to work them, not necessarily budgeting them at a full 2,080 hours. We want you to use the commensurate hourly rate that we have listed, instead of the salary. The last item that we have then is on reclassifications, and this is a big one, because this is going to be a big change for your departments, and I've talked with them all, when I have the meetings with them, to let them know that with, with this new system comes new recommendations on policies. Because if positions change, how do you regrade them, so that you don't lose the work that we've done? And what I haven't, what I have told them to expect is, you know, if, if they need to make a change, if something happens, a reorg structure, someone caught me in the hall this afternoon and said, hey, what's going to happen with this? There will be a mechanism to allow the departments to provide information about what is going to change about the position, so that we can properly pay-grade it for you in the same manner that we did the original placements, so that we help maintain that objective, that objective placement, and it's based on, it's based on actual position changes that warrant a different pay grade. So that will be, that's all going to be in your recommended sections. But I'm not going to spend any time really talking about these future opportunities, just please note, the report has a lot of benefit information, to the Commissioner's point, that was talked about, your health insurance. I will just simply say, try to maintain your position in the market. You're doing very well. That means a lot to your employees. And I don't even have any recommendations on the health insurance, other than just keep where you are, if you could all possibly do that. There are some other opportunities that are there. That is not the main, that is not any part of this first recommendation that we have. The first thing we want you to get established are the new wages, get the new policies in place, get things going, and then the county HR can, can kind of come back and revisit some of these with you at a future date. I apologize for being so delayed. I love talking this topic, but I, and I'd like to continue to answer as many questions as you want to ask.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I've been holding my powder till the end.
Yeah, there we go.
So, well, first of all, thank you very much. I, I will admit to you that the, the grids and numbers, I could half-read, because I have mono vision, so my left eye could track it, my right eye's just waiting for me to drive home, so. But I, I will get to those numbers more.
Yep.
Really, a couple, and maybe, maybe I will just have a couple's, because it's getting late, and I know my colleague wants to go home. Oh, then I'll have 10 for you. So, so I'm going to go, I guess, first with my assumption, which I think will get into my questions. The graph that you showed very early on, as far as the tenure of our workforce was concerned, also suggested that even though they may have a long tenure, they may not necessarily have a long time in their position.
Yes.
I'm assuming that is because of not only folks who may leave, well, no, I'll say it this way, I, I'm assuming that may be more because of lateral movement. That's probably the primary culprit of that.
I would agree with that. So what we ask for, we ask for data on that, so we'll get the employee's date of hire, and then the date in position. So it's very possible that, you know, they had a change in responsibilities, changed the job title, that could have changed the date, or they moved to a different position, and that then would have changed the date. So what we do is, we take, what is your most recent date of position that's on file with HR?
Gotcha. But part of that movement can be partially explained by where I may be paying at 40% to 44% of what the percentile is, and I'm going into something that maybe I'm more at the 55th percentile. I'm kind of chasing that, that wage. Is that fair?
Well, we, you know, you, you would hope that that happens. I mean, what we would, what, when we look at the tenure of your organization, I would have expected to see more, more positions in that blue category, which is, you know, market competitive safe category, right?
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it's, it's really simply because your system that you have is broken. So in a perfect world, they might go up the career ladder, right? But they still might be in a lower percentile, because they're kind of starting, they're starting over, and they have to work their way through the range again.
Right.
But I think in, in this case, you might have some of that, but you also have, you have a broken system.
Yeah.
Where a lot of your ranges just weren't market competitive, so the employees are progressing through a range, and the range isn't tied to the market at that point.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Well, and I would observe that even in some of our past budgetary discussions, at least in the sheriff's office, and some of those 24/7 positions, we've been trying to kind of adjust as we can.
Yep.
To those market seats.
Absolutely.
So I, I get that. So one of the things that wasn't necessarily presented here, but it does kind of get to my, my concern about that lateral movement, is trying to understand who fits in what category. So if I have someone, and I think we spent a long time even leading up to the work that you've done, is in trying to understand not only what's going on within the market, so we know about who we can hire, but also what's happening within our system, so that we understand better those lateral hires, those lateral movements. And so trying to understand what does someone in the clerk's office compare to what is someone's doing in the collector's office versus what someone is doing in the sheriff's office, I think becomes a little bit important. And again, we didn't, really didn't touch on that tonight, but, but I would, I would ask you, kind of, where, where can we understand those relationships with your recommendations a little better? Why don't I stop there and let you answer that one?
Yeah, no, and that's a fair question. And so what, here's, when we, when we look at placing positions, number one, we have to look at the market. What's the market saying?
Yeah.
But then, that's not the whole story, because we know that there are certain characteristics about those positions.
Right.
And we go to that position analysis. So, and we call that, it's called a point factoring. And so we factor each of those positions, and then we say, all right, so, you know, where are positions clustering together? What makes sense? And sometimes, we might even, that might even come up in a conversation with the department director when we're doing the review, to say, all right, you know, these are very heavy in customer service, entry level, they're going to learn on the job, it's going to take them about a year, and we're saying we want to cluster them together. Does that make sense? Yes or no? Yes, it does. No, it doesn't. Okay, now let's talk about why, and then, and do we need to go back and revisit anything? The key here, part of the key here, is going to be making sure that the departments have updated job descriptions, so that all of this is memorialized in writing.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, we've got this from our market sheets, and from our position analysis sheets, but not all of your job descriptions are representative of that at this time. And I do believe I have a section in the report on that, to make sure that departments have updated that, so that Human Resources as well can look at that from, all right, we've got all of these in one, you know, in 120, and it's not always going to work out perfectly, but if they're all in 120, do they have all, you know, very similar characteristics? And if they don't, there's probably a reason for that, maybe the market, or, or something of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, the best way of looking at that is by looking at the, by pay grade number and the representative positions that are in it. I think that what we are focusing on here is trying to describe it by department, right? We're, we're labeling out by department, just because of the enormity of the organization, and just having, you know, departments focus on just your department. But there is a mechanism that you have, where you can look at it from the pay grade, and then you can see all of those positions in each of those respective pay grades.
I got you.
Yep. And that, that is avail, that, I do, I, I think that has been provided.
Okay.
One of those documents that was provided to you. Yep.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Perfect. And then, and then I'll just make this my last one. So the recommendation is to get into that 50% percentile, which I understand, being in that average, knowing that the market will change, and that average will move as it, as it moves.
Yeah.
I, I am curious, though, if there is an assumption, maybe there is, maybe there's not, as far as things like what we might expect a turnover rate to be within that percentile, or what might be a vacancy rate that we might expect within that percentile. And the reason I ask is, you know, there's always a sunk cost, there's always a training cost, there's always those things, and so whether you're at 40, or 50, or 60, there are probably some things that are associated with that. So could you kind of speak to that, and maybe give, if you can even, some expectation of, if you're at the 50th percentile, this is probably what you're looking at, or whatever?
Healthy turnover rates are about 10%. And if you are showing yourself 20% at this point, you've got, you've got an issue. I, you know, the, the challenge that we have is that I can build it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the human capital is going to come to you either, because they still all have a choice and options, and you know, we know, that there are other organizations on that list that are going to continue to pay more, more than you as an organization. So, you know, my hope will be that your turnover rate will be less than 20%. And, you know, I think that there's more than just the turnover rate, it's the time to hire.
Right.
The number of failed, failed hires, you know, how many declined, you know, that type of thing, that is going to give you a better picture of, is 50th percentile enough for you, or do you need it to be a little bit more aggressive? But, you know, other than that, that turnover number, I don't really have, I don't really have, yeah.
No, and that's fine, and I also respect the notion that we're not completely at 50% yet. We've got a little work to get to that.
Little way to go.
So, okay.
Yeah.
At least getting there.
Right.
But, but I, I also want to set an expectation, or how, you know, okay, if that's the new baseline, it, it doesn't necessarily mean you're out of the woods. You've, you've, you may be able to see some daylight, but you're still in the woods, right?
Well, that's correct. And if you recall, in, in our strategic plan and performance metrics, those are some of the things that you'll see in the annual report. So we'll hopefully be able to see what, what is the benefit of going to the 50th percentile, and, and, you know, and if we, unfortunately, financial reasons dip back, you, you know, we'll start, again, we need to start using data more to tell us, is it working, is it not working? And hopefully, we can get, if it's the commission's desire to be a little bit above the 50th percentile, then again, still watch that data.
Yeah.
Because it helps tell the story.
Yeah, perfect. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there, but again, thank you for all your hard work.
Welcome.
And appreciate, well, not just yours, but Kim and Diana as well.
And the directors, and the managers, and the employees. I mean, there was a lot of individuals who touched this project in many different ways.
Very well said.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson. Couple of questions, maybe Diana for this one. Do our employees, have they, has this information been shared with our employees yet?
No. It has been shared with directors for them to do another check for us, to make sure things, but no, it's not necessarily been out with the employees.
Having been through this a couple times at a couple other agencies in another state, I know both times, the biggest factor, maybe you've experienced this, the biggest issue that, the biggest complaint, is the classification, where people are classified and what their job position is classified as. And I know we're talking about positions, not people, but that seems to rub most people the wrong way. They feel like they've been cheated out of what they're really doing. So I'd be curious to know what that feedback is, once this gets out, and have you experienced that kind of stuff with the studies you've done, or?
Oh, sure, absolutely. We don't go into studies expecting that we're gonna make one hundred percent of the employees happy with those outcomes, and we know that is not going to be the case. And I can tell you that I am one hundred percent aware that we have some individuals that are, you know, going to be unhappy with the, with the outcomes and the recommendations of this, because they disagree with the job title. And that is something that, you know, I, you know, administration will guide me, and if there's gonna be any additional conversations to that, or, or not.
I guess my, my counsel on that is just be cautious, that's, that's going to happen, and department heads out there, that's going to happen.
Yep.
I think we need to listen to that and consider, you know, when is it fair, and when is it, you know, this is, sorry, but this is what we, what we're going with. The other thing we talked about, fiftieth percentile, I'm not a big fan of fiftieth percentile, I'd like to see us above that. How we get there, it's another question. Have you done in any of your studies, and I think I know the answer to this, but have you ever done anything that has to do with the size of the workforce? In other words, you know, how many, how many shares per population does Clay County have versus other, versus other counties, or anything like that, as far as, is our workforce big or small, or just the right size?
So, like a staffing analysis?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, we might be asked that question where we will, when we're collecting data, then we will also ask, you know, what is your FTEs for this particular department? Just to, and we turn that information over. But we, staffing studies and comp studies don't normally mix very well, because employees get concerned that, you know, the outcome is gonna lead to layoffs or some things of that nature. The staffing studies get very complex, like, for example, public safety and McGrath, we're heavily involved in the public safety, and we do organizational and staffing studies all the time, but it's really complex, because it's more than just the population that deter, that should help determine what that staffing size should look like. And it almost becomes a project all by itself. So we tend, we tend to try to keep it separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I prefaced that with, because I don't know how we get to above fifty percent. And to me, in my mindset, is a smaller workforce with higher-paid employees a better option? Or are we the right size, we just need to pay more? I don't know, but it's something to, to, I think we need to think about. So when I, I worked for a couple other cities, and one was a much bigger city, I mean, it's a three-and-a-half billion-dollar budget for that city, and we went through the same process, and we ended up with about the fifty percent. We were kind of in the same boat we are now, a lot of us were below, we wanted to go to the fifty percent. Then I worked at another city, which happened to be probably one of the wealthiest cities in the nation, and they were above, way above fifty percent. And there was a night-and-day difference in the workforce, and I was part of a, I was responsible for hiring and firing for my department, and the quality of candidates that I got was astronomically better, I could be much more choosy, and it was just a much more professional workforce. And I guess it goes back to you get, you get what you pay for sometimes, and it's not all about money, I get that, but I think it's important to be competitive, but I don't like being average, and I don't think Clay County is average. I don't want Clay County to be average, I want Clay County to be, you know, that, that light-on-the-hill kind of a thing. I want Clay County to be, you know, the aspirational community where people aspire to live, if people aspire to move here, people aspire to work here, even in the, in the government, because we're better than the rest of them. So I would like to figure out a way how we, how we can do that, how we can get there. I think Diana will probably be retired on the beach somewhere, relaxing and not worrying about all this garbage by the time we have to, but if there's any potential future county administrators that are out there watching us right now, and hopefully all the candidates are, know that that's the direction that I would like to see, is us get to much more than fifty percent, because we're Clay County, we're not, we're not like the other places, and we're better, we're better, and we need to have better employees and treat our employees better, I think, and that just ties into it.
So I do not disagree with those comments. I think, as was said earlier, our current system is broken for many, many reasons.
Right.
And so getting this in place, to me, is the first step. This isn't a, you know, you approve it and we're done with it. It is, as she mentioned earlier, we need to move to get rid of the lower steps, right? And start people at higher, but we also are cognizant of our employees and compression issues, and so how do we continue to move through that? So I think those are going to have to be continued strategies each year when we look at the budget, and how, how do we keep moving and getting into the direction of higher than a fifty percent, and getting our employees through, and getting them closer to the market.
So, and another question I have is how this works with other electeds. In other words, we're a little bit of a mess right now, and I think most agencies go through this. They become a mess because they want to pay their employees more, it doesn't work in the system we have, so we're gonna figure out another way to make it work so we can pay this good employee more money, and they're not in that qualif, that classification, and not in this pay, so we end up messing it up. And ours is pretty boogered up, and that's why we're trying to fix it. But how does that work with, I mean, can we set a class and comp, you know, ranges, all that kind of stuff you have on paper, and dictate that to other, to other electeds? Can this body dictate that to the sheriff's department, or the?
So I will talk a little bit, and then I'll defer to, to our attorney. So that is part of the commission establishing and approving the pay structure, which are the steps, and the rules that go with it, right? The rules of engagement, so to speak. What happens when you promote, how do you reclassify, all of those things, and so those are policies adopted by the commission, we will put those in the employee handbook. It's my understanding and interpretation of the Constitution that it says office holders must follow policies of the commission. So if this is your pay plan, and this is your pay structure on how it is to function, it's my belief that office holders will have to follow those, because that gets us into trouble when, you know, we're a large organization versus small organization. So if they hear that in the sheriff's office, or the assessor's office, or the auditor's office got to give their employees more money because they had a vacancy, and we now follow this with steps, that's what we have now, and we have problems with it. So we want to be fair and equitable across the organization. So that's my opinion, but then I'm gonna turn to the attorney to say, is that what you think?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Between policy, personal policies and budget, those two arms, they really will take care of it, I think, with, with all the employees across the, the entire county.
But that's kind of a two-edged sword to me. Even if we can do that, I'm, I'm at the side of, okay, if I was the sheriff, or I was the auditor, or the assessor, I'm elected, just like we're elected. You know, I'm elected to run my own department. I hate to have to force, I hate to be in the position to force some things down, another elected's department, you know, down the throat. So I would hope that somehow that we have some kind of conversations with the other electeds, that we bring them all in, we can all somehow have a discussion to make sure we're all happy with this. This is the direction that we all want to go, and if certainly if they're not happy with it, that we know that ahead of time.
We, we actually had, and I should say we, but I did consult, because that was one of the challenges I put to them when they met with department heads and office holders and said, you know, things are going to change. What has happened in the past, you know, taking money from a vacant position, giving people salary increases, it's not fair, because other departments don't have vacancies, and then you come back and you want us to fully fund the position that you just took money from. And so that creates a hardship on the budget. And so we said, our, you know, policies are gonna change, we really need to do something different, you know, and, and everybody agreed to that, everybody understands that. Now, you know, the rubber will meet the road when, you know, they want to come and do something, and, and it doesn't really fall under the policies, and then we'll have to figure that out. But I do think there is a sense of understanding and collaboration and wanting to put in a system that is equitable and fair across the organization.
And I would, I would hope that they'd be in agreement with this, but really, I think it's important that we get buy-in from the other electeds on this, at least some kind of verbal, that, hey, yeah, we like this, it's a good idea, or if they do have concerns, that we have an opportunity to listen to what their concerns are as well, whether that's in a public meeting like this, or private conversations, I don't know how that works, but I just think it's real important that, that we have buy-in from the other electeds. So we don't go down this road, because it's not gonna be the same electeds in positions, you know, down the road. And, you know, we've got a new auditor that comes in, or we've got a new sheriff that comes in, or whatever, we want them to know, hey, this is a policy that the prior elected, you know, was in favor of, and we'd like to stick with this. So I'm just, I just think communication is key, and I really hope that we get their buy-in and, and opinions that they have, the other electeds, that is. Thank you.
By the way, before I go to Commissioner Lawson, I just want to add, that is also, applies in a way to the commission, in that there will invariably be at some point turnover, especially since we have term limits in these positions, and there has to be, I think, a consistency, I think, that employees can see and they can depend upon, and it is predictable so they can plan their careers in accordance with an established order that they, whether they are in favor of or not, still, they at least understand the ground rules and are able to proceed on that without, they'd be getting flipped around every two years or whatever.
Commissioner Lawson, I thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you. I will tell you one thing, I talked to Victor, and he, he was very happy with it, and he understood, you know, and I was lucky enough to sit in when the presentation was made to the assessor, and after we walked out and sat down and talked for a little while, he seemed to be real gratified with the way it was set up, and felt that it was pretty fair, you know, in the way that they, that we progressed from step to step. So that, that is a good thing. You know, I would say we're unbelievably fortunate, I say this at almost every meeting, and I mean it, our staff is stellar, we're so blessed with the people that we have. So I, I, I hope that, you know, I think when this was all done, it was done to make sure everything was fair, and, and hopefully, our department heads, you know, bought into it, too. They're not as vocal as, as the people or office holders are. But you can't really compare California to Missouri, Commissioner Johnson, you know? I mean, your cost of living out there is phenomenal.
We don't want to be like California.
Oh, hell no, we don't. Yeah, yeah. But, but, you know, what they make out there, well, my gosh, we'd be living high on the hog if we could make that here, but your cost of living out there is phenomenal, so they've gotta make that money, or they can't buy groceries and put gas in their car. Well, now they'll be able to better. But anyway, I, I think, you know, I wasn't all that excited about doing this study, but now that we've done it, and I know we've got the money to pay for it, I like the fairness of it and the way the stair steps are with it. And, and I think we're gonna have, we're going to have, you know, a little bit of a problem when Susie goes from this department and moves over to another department, and maybe her skill set there isn't as good as it was here. So how are they gonna handle that? There's gonna be those little things, but that, that all, I think for the most part, it sounds like it's, it's a pretty solid situation.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks, yeah, I just want to say thanks to everybody for all the hard work. I know that includes basically everybody in the room right now, so thank you, and, you know, look forward to updating and, you know, modernizing the way we do this, I think it makes a little sense. And just wanna co-sign what Commissioner Johnson said about, you know, I think you do get what you pay for. I think that's, you know, it can sometimes sound harsh to say that, but it's, but it's true, it's the way capital markets work, it's, you know, I love capitalism, I think it collects and processes data and, and creates outcomes that are better than any other model by far. And one of those elements is that the more you pay, the more selective you get to be with regard to who you hire, and then you get, you know, better outcomes. And I think sometimes there's a pressure in government to pay really low salaries, because people don't like the idea of, you know, government employees making money, you know, especially because it comes with their taxpayer expense, which is an understandable impulse. But the reality is the reality. It's a, you know, it's a workforce market like any other, and if you want to play in the capitalism market, you gotta be willing to, to pay enough in order to have the talent that you want to have, in order to have, you know, workers who do a good job. And so I strongly believe that we ought to be above fifty percent as well, both because of that reason and because I think it's the right thing to do. I think the folks who work for us here at the county do a great job, but also I think to the extent that government can be a depression on wages versus meeting the market on wages, I'd rather us meet the market and even help push wages up. And I think when we overly indulge in the pressure to keep wages low at the, in the government sector, we, we have a depressant effect on, on wages for, for other workers. And I don't think that's what we ought to be striving to do. So strongly agree, let's aim for above fifty percent, it's the right thing to do by our, our folks, I think it's the right thing to do by the community. And I'll just make my, my same pitch that I've made on it before, which is, the way we do that is by having enough money to do it, right? And, and that comes both by, you know, not spending money in stupid ways, for sure, let's not, you know, let's not waste money. And I'm always open to ideas along those lines, including, you know, over time, you mentioned, you know, are we, are we right-sized? And I think that is a good analysis to do over time. I think that's better to do through attrition, as opposed to, you know, big mass firings, that kind of things, but, but that kind of right-sizing can happen over time, and, and, you know, is a smart thing to look at. But it also comes on the other side of the ledger, which is the, the tax revenue side, and we ought to be real cautious when different ideas percolate up. Our auditor emailed us this past week, I guess the state's looking at eliminating the local sales tax for, for groceries, which would cost, I think, nine million dollars to our, to our local, to our county budget, which is, you know, like twenty-something percent of our, of our sales tax that we get. So, you know, it's always nice to get to do things, like, let's, let's do this cut or that, but we ought to bear in mind that that runs directly contrary to the ability to be above fifty percent on, on our, on our, you know, pay for, for the fine folks who work for us. So just some things to keep in mind, appreciate all the hard work that went into it, and look forward to implementing this over time.
Very good. Commissioner Wagner.
No, thank you. I couldn't resist all the powder that was laying around me in these last few comments, and so I had to scoop up some, because I, I, I do want to jump off the comments that Commissioner Carpenter just made, that, that this discussion within it has a whole lot attached to it. It has a lot of budget attached to it, and it has a lot of how we, how we put positions in the budget attached to it. And, and of course, our county administrator gave me some fresh chum when she said, looked at me and talked about vacancies and all of that. Well, I love that, just pour some sauce on that, and I'll just eat it all night. But I, but I, I will just simply say that when we seem, at least in the past, we've tried, we've kind of looked at positions very similarly across the organization, we, we count on vacancies to essentially make our budget. And I know we've had our auditor here, and, and I hated when he kind of, what it seemed to me, kind of played it down, it's only three million dollars, well, yeah, that's three million dollars. And that may be the difference between being at a fifty percent percentile, or hitting fifty-five, or sixty. And, and I do think there's a, there's always a danger of chasing the market leader, or becoming the market leader, I'm sure you would agree with that, so there's some medium in there, but I, I do get nervous, when we've also talked tonight, the comment was made about protecting your budget, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just keep spending it so I can protect it, and I may maneuver my vacancies to go give someone else a raise, well, that's part of what we're trying to solve, I think, with, with what we have here. So I do hope that, and I appreciate the comments that were made about our other office holders, and I, I hope if we ask to maintain some discipline when it comes to budgets and positions, that that discipline will be met with the same gratitude that, that maybe, that hopefully this was met with. I, I just, I just, you know, the things that are going on in Jefferson City, well, it's, you know, it's its own version of crazy, we all know that, we've all discussed that, right? But there are things that we can do, and part of that is, in the, in the discipline we have with our budget, how we look at these vacancies historically, and I still maintain that there is, there is, there is a way to flex that, maybe in a different way than we have, that's just me. But all those things work together in concert, and so when you start pulling a lever over here, you're gonna pull it over here, too, right? And, and so as we get into next year's budget, which again, you will be at that beach.
I'm thinking of it.
You'll be, you know, that's, you know what? No, you won't. But, but I, I do hope that when we get into next year's budget, these issues, whether it is vacancies, where we want to be, hopefully we're close to that fifty percent, I understand if we may not be, but if we want to lead, or be a, be more of a leader, then right-sizing becomes important. then right sizing becomes important because then if that allows us to, to be more selective, then I guarantee we will get some great candidates for these positions. So that's all my powder. I'll stop and I'll quit picking it up.
Commissioner Johnson, do you have more remarks regarding beaches?
I just want to clarify one thing before any employees hear this and they hear this term right sizing and the potential of that kind of thing. Just to be very, very clear on this, and Commissioner Carpenter talked about, any right sizing that could potentially take place in years to come would be through attrition. I'm a firm believer that any layoffs that happen to shrink a, any city department, whatever, I think that's poor management, absolutely horrible management for, for many years. I think you should always be able to downsize through attrition and that's the proper way to do it. And I would never be in favor of downsizing when it comes to layoffs. To me, it's going to be, it'd always be through attrition, so I want our employees to know that I, I think that's what my colleagues are talking about as well. Don't anybody start talking here, they're going to start layoffs. That's not happening. Okay? Thanks.
Just one follow-up to Commissioner Johnson, and that is, I'm kind of thinking back to one of the first slides that we had and that one was regarding the age of our workforce and that sort of thing. So my gut feeling, and I don't have that committed to memory, but my gut feeling is we are coming up to a demographic sort of a situation to where that is an achievable way to go forward. That is a viable option. How it actually shakes out, we'll see when we get there. But I think that that's an important point to be made is that we have the ability to achieve what we feel we need to achieve through that method as opposed to other methods. And I think we would all prefer that. I don't know how many here have experienced job loss. I did when I was, when we were first married, so my wife now that is, not you guys. So I mean, I think that anyone who's been through that kind of a situation understands the importance of maintaining stable employment for those who we ask a lot from and we get even more from them than we ask. So I think having that attitude of gratitude, so to speak, is not the worst way to go in, the worst frame of mind to have as we go through this process. We certainly, I think, again, I would like to think, and I'm pretty sure I speak for everybody here, that we all have a great deal of admiration and gratitude towards our employees, to our coworkers, actually, maybe may be more an accurate way to put it. So I think we've put, I think we are looking at something that has a good structure to it, that we can implement in a way that will, it's not going to be universally, you know, applauded. There will be drawbacks, there will be bumps in the road, but I think this is charting a course that will allow us to responsibly budget, respect our employees and also be responsible to those constituents who put us in these offices. So I think we've got a good, I think it's a great framework and I certainly appreciate all the hard work you've done. And it was, I got to tell you, that was a lot of information and we certainly appreciate that and there'll be a lot of reading and analyzing going forward, no doubt on our part. Any other comments before we close the discussion?
Well, I'd like to talk about next steps, right? Because one of the things and, you know, HR, Kim would say, she's getting gray hair. This is a moving target, right? We have personnel changes every day that are happening. So to some degree, you know, we kind of want to move, if this is, if you're agreeable to the step plan and the classification and we know there's going to be some that we may have to do some things afterwards, but, you know, we'd like to sort of, if you support this, then we would like to come forward, you know, within, I would say, two to three weeks with the policies for adoption and the plan adoption, because there is a lot of work that has to happen behind the scenes and ADP payroll, changing all of that to make it work where we, because almost every employee is going to see some kind of a salary increase. Maybe some will be greater than others and we'd like to get that in their hands based on what is happening in the economy. Our goal is we're trying to work that that would happen sometime in April. And so there's a lot of work that has to happen on our end, behind the scenes, after you adopt it. So what I'm hearing is we have some work to do to put the policies down in writing. We'll meet with the office holders and get some feedback from them on how this actually works because there is change for all of us. And then, you know, again, have them look at again, these are their positions, titles, this is the pay grade within their structure and have those conversations one more time and then come back to the commission for adoption. And once you officially adopt it, then we start behind the scenes so we can get it ready to stand up the first of April, if, if that's the direction you want us to go.
And I think what the administrator is seeking is consensus, that she be able to proceed along those lines. I have the same sense of it, but I just, you know, certainly head nods will do as everybody pretty much, there seems to be a general agreement, if not unanimous, that yes, you do have the consensus of the commission to proceed in those lines.
And I'd like to give a shout out not only to our consultant, but certainly the HR team and all the department heads and the office holders and the employees. It took a lot of work and a lot of detail on everybody's part to get through this data and put a plan together. And so I appreciate everybody's work on that. It's very important. It's an important step for the county to implement an equitable program like this.
Very good. If there's nothing else, then we will consider this discussion closed and we will move on to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Very short, just the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, which is the 6th of March at 6 o'clock here in the chambers.
That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter, he'd like to, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, just real quick, I don't know if you guys saw on the news or read about the other day, I think it was Liberty Police Department, that caught a pretty bad, bad character. Stolen car, guns, lots of fentanyl, enough fentanyl to kill 1600 to 1700 people, that kind of stuff. And that was because of the license plate reader system that was in place, the license plate, and we approved that for the county. I'm not sure whose reader picked it up, if it was ours or if it was Liberty's, but nonetheless, they're all tied together. But it went past a camera and the camera recognized the plate as a stole, I think recognized a stolen car and that's what led to officers tracking this guy down and put a pretty bad character in jail. So those cameras work. I think it's a flock system that they were using, but they work and it was a good story if you haven't read it.
Well said. Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Lawson, Commissioner Withington. I think I will, I will also join the commissioners in saying, I think it's about time for us to head on down the road, so we are adjourned. Thank you.